Who else is here? We'll do a pledge of allegiance. She wants to lead us in the pledge. You want to do it, Ken? Let's do it.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So moving right along, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Aggermonte, here. Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Here.
And Mayor Harvey?
Present.
Thank you.
There we go. No report on closed session because we have had no closed session before. Can we get an approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Aggermonte? Aye. Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 401.
Wonderful. All right. Moving on to presentations. So we've got item 1.1. We've got a recognition for two of our CSCC members who have since left the commission. So if I could have Ken Brown and Thomas Jacqueline stand up, please. We can recognize you. Is Thomas here? We just got Ken. So Ken, how many years have you served on the commission? Oh, Thomas Edwards and Jacqueline Torres. I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't get it wrong. Thomas Edwards, and then we need Jacqueline Torres. Is Jacqueline here? No? All right. Well, Ken, I want to thank you for your long period of time serving on the CSCC. You are certainly a welcome addition, and the wealth of knowledge you bring since being a city council member and a mayor a couple times was definitely well-served. And so we appreciate all of your contributions to the city, your ongoing contributions to the city. And thank you for your time on the CSCC. We've got a little plaque here for you. And I'll grab it for you right away. Does anybody else want to say anything for Ken? Yeah, good.
Ken, thank you for your continued service of the city. And I suspect you will be involved in our community after this, just not with an official title from the city unless you have plans for the November ballot, maybe.
Been there and done now.
Go ahead, David.
Well, Ken, I was proud to serve with you on the city council and thank you for all your work with the commissions. And I know you're not done, so your community involvement here has just been great. So thank you for everything.
And neither you, David. Best of luck tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And thank you, Ken. You know, you always come up with something. You're walking up to the podium. It's okay to be mad, Madeline, or whatever. It's so wonderful. Absolutely.
You have a good reason, Madeline.
You remind us. You remind us of just easy stuff that we should be proud to do. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
All right. All right. So we're going to move right along to item 1.2. Everybody's favorite. Oh, Vice Mayor. Oh, it says Vice Mayor on the thing. But it doesn't matter because everybody knows I'm the mayor. We're moving on. We're moving right along to item 1.2, which is fast becoming everybody's favorite thing. It's definitely my favorite thing to do here at city council, which is when we do celebrate Sonoma. So Ms. Claire is here today, and we are celebrating her contributions to the city of Sonoma. And when Maggie and her friend came and reached out to me and we met at Sunflower Cafe, they're just asking if I would be happy to recognize the contributions. And look at this audience. We have, this is the most children we've ever had here by far. And it's just so wonderful to see the young generations. And really, this is a town that, for me and for really, I think, everybody here on council, is so built on family and community and childcare and where to bring your children and how to do things for kids is something that we all try to struggle to provide more for. And that's something that you've been providing for years. For years. Many years. Do we have a count on how many years? Twenty-two years at the Sonoma County Library, reading to children. Let's give that up. Do you want to come up while we praise you? Come on up while we praise you. There we go. So right move. Right there, you're good. So, I mean, literacy and child reading and imagination and all of these things are such a crucial thing that we try to provide as a city. And as everybody knows, it really takes a village, and it takes parents who are engaged. It takes schoolteachers who are there, and it takes community members like yourself that provide that added little bit of magic. And the beauty that you provide to read to children, to get them engaged with reading, to get them engaged with the library, we're so lucky to have you. And thank you so much for all that you do. And I'm so grateful. And if we've got, does anybody else want to say something for Ms. Claire? Should we do? Okay, go for it.
When I was a kid, my favorite days in the summer involved going to the pool, going to Baskin Robbins, and then going to the library where I would check out as many books as they would let me. And I have such fond memories and a strong love of reading as an adult because of it. And I know what a huge impact you make on young people's lives and getting them excited about reading and introducing them to things. So thank you so much for what you do for our community. And I think this is the perfect next chapter of this occasion, which is to honor you. So thank you.
Well, Claire, I know that whenever I need information, I was told, go see Claire. Go talk to her. You helped me with some information. I can only say I, like everyone here, I love the library. I got in trouble because I would prefer to go to the library than catechism. So it was right next door in San Francisco. So it was the devil pulled me in, I guess. I couldn't, I just couldn't do it. I needed to go to see the, get books and everything. And I'm just really gratified by the world that you played for the people here and the children for the city of Sonoma. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, Claire, thank you. I was going to bring my twin boys to see you tonight, but it's a good thing I didn't because they'd be running around. But thank you. I know Genevieve, my oldest daughter, spent a lot of time with, at the library. She's a good reader, mostly because of people like you that have taught. Little baby Lila, I call her, my three-and-a-half-year-old, she loves to go to the library. And I think seeing a friendly face there. I was hoping you could do the TikTok song before it's, before this is over. I was going to do it, but my wife said, no, don't do the TikTok song. There's an election tomorrow. Do not do the TikTok song. But in all seriousness, thank you for all you've done and the continued work. I know it's hard. I don't know how you can deal with all those kids at one time. It just holds your cool so well. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
If we have one or two members of the community who'd like to come up and say something about Claire, that would be totally fine. Go ahead. We have everybody will be here till midnight. But you guys are doing a reception at the library after, right? You were doing a reception at the library after, so go after there. You can thank her all you want, but please, please speak on her behalf.
I'm Mary Evelyn Arnold. I was the library commissioner for six years, representing the city of Sonoma. And Claire is a rock star. We've got the best children's librarian in the whole system. Thank you.
I got to work with her her whole career. Because I worked at the library. And besides being so wonderful with children, she's magical with relationships among your coworkers and loving and caring. And I can't say enough about what a wonderful person she is. We had her at the library. We have her in this community, and she's one of my best friends. And boy, let's send her on a trip, okay?
Well, so if you want to say something or if you want to do the TikTok song, and then I've got a plaque for you, and then we'll take a picture. We'd love to do that. Yeah.
I would really like to say thank you so much to the wonderful city of Sonoma and to the Sonoma County Library System for hiring me, to my husband for dragging me up here after living in the East Bay for the first 40 years of my life. So it's been wonderful, and I am not retiring. Thank you all very much. And it is Read Across America Day. It's Dr. Seuss's 116th birthday.
That's right. How appropriate.
And so after you come to the library and eat cake, please go home and read with someone you love. And vote tomorrow.
You want to have the kids sing TikTok? Absolutely. Let's have the kids sing TikTok. Of course.
All right.
Oh.
Ready?
No.
No. So Claire. So we've got this here for you. And this is a plaque naming. And this is perfect because it is Dr. Seuss's 100th birthday. So this is fantastic. 116th, wow. So we've got Claire O'Brien Day. We're officially naming this. The city of Sonoma is naming this forevermore, March 2nd, Claire O'Brien Day. And so thank you so much. And that's for you. Thank you so much. And if you'd like, we'd like everybody to come up. We'll have Kathy stand up on the dais. We'll have the council come down, and we'll take a big picture with everybody. Yeah. And you'll be in front. The front will be here. Yeah. Come on up.
She'll be up.
Come on up, out of your seats. Come on up, come up in the picture. Yeah, face looking me. All the little kids come right up front so I can see your smiling faces. Look at that smiley face. Come on, pumpkin, come up here, we can see you. Squeeze up, you guys, squeeze up. All right. Claire's Fan Club, are you ready? Ready? One, two, three. Yay, Claire! Perfect. All right.
Congratulations.
Good to see you, ma'am. I'll see you again soon, I hope. All right, thank you. Absolutely.
Should we move for public comment? All right. Whoa! Whoa! Nancy Kirwan to the stage. So now we're going to invite members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. At this time, so under the Ralph M. Brown Act, no item commented on by the public can be acted on by the council at this time. When recognized by a mayor, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Clearly state your name so that we know who you are and make a comment. You've got about three minutes. Go for it.
Well, hopefully, this will take less than that. Nancy Kirwan, K-I-R-W-A-N, 1920 Grove Street, member of the Citizens to Renew the City of Sonoma's Urban Growth Boundary. I wanted to state that the draft language for the new renewal of the UGB was submitted by the Citizens Group February 24th, 2020. And we are wondering when the language for the UGB renewal will be made available by the UGB Ad-Hoc Committee of the City Council. And then we would also like to know if there's going to be a date for the public review of that new text. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street in the beautiful city of Sonoma. My wife Jewel and I are now working for Justice Grown. We're assisting them in finding a location and opening a cannabis dispensary in the city of Sonoma. Justice Grown matches our values for what we think a business should be in the city of Sonoma and selling cannabis. I'm also looking for a baker, bakery for Mike the Baker, very famous baker at the Friday Morning Market. Mike is looking for a location. And I'll leave you with these prophetic words. Good luck tomorrow, Mr. Cook and Bernie.
Good evening, Mayor Harvey, City Council, and city staff. I just wanted to give the council an update on the Sonoma Overlook Trail today. The Overlook Trail stewards and the Ecology Center did a maintenance project on the decommissioned area of the trail where you first go up from the kiosk and you go where the new trail cuts off and the old trail goes down. We've been having trouble there with someone throwing all the brush off of the trail and continuing to use the old trail, which is now decommissioned. And so personally, I've thrown that brush back on there at least 10 times. And today, we went to, Nancy was there today as well, went to Great Lakes to throw all of it back on and wire it down with spikes down to the ground. And so we're hoping that we can close that portion of the trail off so that the trail experience for the stewards can be more pleasant than just being cops trying to keep the trail system the way that we had wanted it to start with. And so that's a little bit of, you know, a downer, but that's typical for trail work in that people do cutoffs, people do social trails. And so if you're going to be in trail maintenance, you have to deal with a certain portion of the population who doesn't obey the rules. But otherwise, the trail seemed very popular, and people were going up and enjoying it and all kind of people going through there. And so it's a really nice public resource, and it's been fun for me to be involved with it. And I just wanted to let you know that, how things are going and let you be aware of that project because I had hoped that Fergie would be here tonight so she could hear about the maintenance issue there, and I could just kind of put a little bug in the ear of the city to keep an eye on that area maybe a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else rising for public comment? All right. I'll go ahead and close comment, bring it back to the council. Do you have any meeting dedications tonight? Not one? Okay. Moving right along. Moving on to items 4.1 to 4.5. This is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted on by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion by these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may change order of the agenda. Does anybody want to change order of the agenda? No? Okay, great. We do public comment on this, right? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing that, bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, and 4.5.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. The motion carries 401.
All right. We'll move on to item 5.1. This was continued from our previous meeting. Yeah. So we'll be holding a continued public hearing to discuss, consider, and possibly act on the adoption of a resolution of non-residential affordable housing fees for new development. Consistent? Oh, no?
Sorry. I'm here for you. We need to, 5.1, you still need to open 5.1. And then hold public comment on the continuance.
I'm confused. I apologize. Thank you. Okay. So we'll be continuing item 5.1 to a date certain on March 23rd, 2020. I'll open public comment on the continuation of item 5.1. Seeing no, oh, we got one.
I just wanted to ask the planning director if this was the project that where they had kind of advertised it as affordable housing, but it wasn't actually affordable housing? I just was sure exactly which project it was.
I'll close the public comment so that David Storey can respond.
Yes, this is the residential project that was considered workforce housing. I think that was the terminology that was promoted by the applicant. 1211 Broadway, which is on the west side of Broadway, just across the street, basically, from my high school. I believe it was six residential units, and one of them had the cottage in the front. I believe that's the one that Fred's talking about.
Great. Do we need a motion to continue? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Rachel Hunley with a motion. David Cook with a second. Rebecca Parr, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 401.
All right. Now we're moving on to item 5.2. Hold a continued public hearing to discuss, consider, and possibly act on the adoption of a resolution establishing non-residential affordable housing impact fees for new development consistent with the policies of the general, the city's general plan and housing element, and make findings that this action is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. David Storey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, before you tonight is the same staff report, if you will, that was at your last meeting. So if you had a chance to review that, very little has changed other than the text that we provided in a box for you, which was basically an update that discussed a letter that the city received prior, since the last meeting from Mr. Hooper and Kenwood Development. I will speak more about that later. Before you tonight are basically two topics of discussion. Number one is to memorialize the discussion your council had in December with respect to non-residential impact fees. And the second component would be to provide direction based on feedback that you gave us and direction that we've taken and repackage, if you will, for residential fees. And these would be INLU fees. So those are the two components tonight. So the first thing we have on the non-residential side is a resolution for you to adopt tonight that basically memorializes the fees that you established for retail, for office, and for hotel use. Now, the letter that I just mentioned previously was a letter that talks about projects that include mixed-use types of development, whether you add residential to a commercial project and the like. And we can certainly provide more information on that that's in the municipal code. So tonight, again, we have a resolution for you to adopt. This is for impact fees that we provided to you. The information in the staff report that talks about the fees that were set with respect to the connection or rationale to NEXUS studies. And that is ready to go. That was based on a $4 per square foot fee for retail and office and $15 for hotel development. If we can go to the slides now, Rebecca, or if you don't mind, thank you. Yes, so again, these are the two, these are the two types of fees that I've just mentioned. Next. So the good news is if your council is of the mind to adopt the non-residential fees, these fees will become effective in 60 days from today, May 1st, that we can start collecting them. As I mentioned, the analysis in the NEXUS fees and studies show that the impact of affordable housing on projects with respect to affordable housing are to the left chart where they range from $184 for office, retail at $282, and hotel from $94. The fees that your council was discussing are certainly below that. Basically, if you look at the hotel fee, you've selected a proposed fee of about 15% of the actual impact itself. So tonight, we'll be discussing very briefly the types of fees for affordable housing INLU. Our current municipal code has a policy that was established years ago that dealt with subdivisions of five or more units. And you have a policy that says 20% of those units have to be built on-site. With respect to projects that are one to four units, that was part of our discussion where your council provided straw poll direction. We also talked about fractional units, additions, and you gave us direction on multifamily projects. In the handout tonight, you'll see that this particular chart that I put up here matches the one in the staff report for Table 1. You may recall, direction was given to provide for exemptions for anything up to 1,200 square feet. And these were what I will call benchmarks, and refer to that terminology in just a moment. Your council was interested in having a $4 benchmark at 2,000 square feet, $10 at 3,000 square feet, 15 at 4,000 feet, and then above, excuse me, at 3,000 feet, and then above 4,000 feet was at $20. When you look at those benchmarks, there are square footages between those areas. And so what we did is we did a sliding scale as your council directed. And I won't go through each one of these, but basically, you can see there that 1,200 square feet is exempt. We put those benchmarks in at 2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, and 4,000 square feet. You can see those fees are somewhat significant. So what we did was looked at residential fees currently within the city. And I know the council is aware that the city collects more than just its fees. We also collect school impact fees, water connection fees. So when you water connection fees. So when you add the affordable housing in-lue fee, you can see for a 1,500 square foot home in the top-left chart, you can see that the the fees are at $6 a square foot will be coming in at $9,000 for a 1,500 square foot home. And it's not self-explanatory, but you just see to the slide right there, you'll see a non-slide fee. So the non-slide fee would be if you didn't have a sliding fee between those benchmarks that we created. And if you had them just fixed, it's what staff is recommending, that fee would actually go down, let's see, I think it's $3,000, $3,000. And you'll see that that kind of has a softened effect, if you will. With respect to the 2,500 square foot home, that would be a reduction of $5,000 because you'd be collecting a fee based at $10 a square foot for that 2,500 square foot home. And that would be $25. On the, as I said previously, there will be a reduction on the 1,500 square foot home of about $3,000. Based on how we provided a 3,000 square foot home, that fee doesn't change because that is right at one of those benchmarks. If you slide up to a 3,500 square foot home, if we did a $15 square foot charge as opposed to 17, that would be a reduction of $7,000. So just trying to give you a sense of scale between $41,000, or if you subtract 3,000 from that, you're still looking at about $40,000 to $100,000 in affordable housing in-lue fees. The next slide that I have here is where you look at other agencies to see what they charge. What I've done here is I've done benchmarks with the sliding scale. So if we didn't do the sliding scale, the fee along the bottom chart there where you see the city of Sonoma, those will come down, as I've just mentioned previously, just slightly less than those numbers. But you can certainly see the city of Helmsburg, Sonoma County, in some cases were lower, in some cases were higher. You can certainly see the impact on those fees within the, within the county. With respect to housing in-lue fees, you can see for fractional units, and I'm skipping, by the way, if you want me to stop at each particular section, we can do that, or I can just kind of go through each of the different, the four different scenarios that we've got direction on.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask that question about the last slide?
Sure.
Just to clarify, the numbers on the bottom of the slide are what the staff proposes or what the council previously approved?
Council previously approved, yes.
Okay, so you're suggesting less than that?
Yeah, and that was based on my previous slide where I had that little red, those red notes off to the side. So for example, on the 1,500 square foot home, you'd reduce it by 3,000. So on this one here, you'd say 9,000 minus 3.
Six.
I'm sorry, it would be 6,000 yeah, minus 3.
Okay. No, I mean 9 minus 3 is 6.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
On this, we're now talking about fractional units. Your council said, hey, wait a minute. For fractional, you want to collect a fee. Right now, we don't have that ability to do it. So if, for example, in this chart, if you were proposing six units, the 20% requirement would say you'd be obligated for 1.2 units. So out of those six units, five of them would be, would be developable. And the sixth unit would also be required to be paying an affordable housing fee for that fractional unit. And I gave an example there. Again, these are unmodified fees, not with staff's recommendation, but with the benchmarks with the sliding scale. So if you can, $10 a square foot for a 2,500 square foot home, that affordable housing fee in addition to one unit on site would be $25,000. When you see the units eight and nine, we round up the 1.6 to be two units. So you see the six units would be market rate, if you will. And then because it's 0.6, 0.5 or more, which at 0.6 it is, then you'd be providing the two, the second unit on site. So that's where you would have six market and two affordable housing units. They would not be paying a fee at that point. The same applies for nine units. And then you can see the successive math calculations for fractional. That would be incorporating your council direction previously. When it comes to residential additions, this is probably the area where the fee is more significant. You can see that based on the direction that $4 a square foot and the like, you see that rate in the third column over from the left. You can see that as you expand in size of your additions, the fee and the relationship between the total fees that the city currently charges, this is not counting the other fees from the other agencies, just the city's building permit fee. You can see that that proportion of the affordable housing fee to the current city building permit fee, which I must mention, is based on the total valuation of the work being conducted. It's a sliding scale fee based on the value of the work as reported by an applicant. You can see that the fees go from 40% all the way up to 130%. So somewhere in that area there around the 500 square foot location, you can see that you're about 90 to 100%, somewhere between 4 and 600 square feet for an addition. What we've then done is provided with you the, an example for the charges that the affordable housing fee would be for multifamily, two to four units. The council direction was to not penalize somebody that wants to do multifamily, but to encourage it. So therefore, the fees were basically the same. And we provided an example there. Somebody wants to come in with three units, what the fee would be. So for example, if you had a 1,200 square foot home, that would be exempt based on the council's direction previously. And then if you had a 1,500 square foot or a 1,700 square foot home, you can see that those, based on the benchmarks, come in at different rates. And so in total for that scenario, for three units, if you will, you're paying $26,000 for that project. In our recommendation tonight, we've asked that you provide direction on as to whether we've captured the fees correctly on the non-residential side, and also if you're willing to adopt the benchmarks as opposed to the sliding scale, certainly that's council's prerogative. Have we captured the fractional units correctly? Should the council on the third item wish to have additions, have a waiver up to a certain square footage of, let's say, 500 square feet, as we recommend? And then we request that your council provides with direction to make amendments to the development code to allow these in-lue fees to be taken care of, in addition to then coming back with a resolution that would be packaged together. And that will take some time for us to look at the development code to incorporate those changes, should you make some changes tonight. So again, tonight, we ask that you adopt the resolution on the non-residential and then provide direction on the residential components.
So I have two quick questions. I'm sure everybody does as well. So just, do units, so let's say you're building affordable housing development, are all those exempt automatically because they're, they're fixed affordable housing regardless of size?
Correct.
Okay. And then do ADUs count as home additions? So like, if I was building an ADU or a JDU on my house, does that fall under the 1,200, 1,200 square foot exemption? Or would that be counted as an addition to my house, in which case it would be falling, it would be, none of it would be exempt?
Yeah, state law recently basically said that if you have impact fees.
Oh, they don't apply to ADUs?
They would not apply up to a certain amount of square footage. And then beyond that number, it's proportionate to what the fees would be if you were building a single family home next to it.
Okay. Anybody else got questions? None at all? All right, we'll go ahead and bring it out for public comment then.
Thank you, members of the council. Bill Hooper with Kenwood Investments, 144 West Napa Street, where you're a friendly hotel developer. And we share your concerns about the need for housing. Eight, nine years ago, when we proposed this, the need was for jobs, but now it's for housing, and so we want to play along. But there's a, there's a couple of gaps in the proposed plan for the non-residential. One is you should allow a mixed-use developer to have the fee waived if that developer is providing housing. What I mentioned in my letter that is in your packages is that we're willing to not only add eight new units to the property, but to convert the existing apartments on the property to all low income. That would exceed any requirement that would be on that property for low income. And we would ask that when a mixed-use developer, our project, or anybody else's, almost all of your commercial projects that are going to be over a half acre in today's environment are going to be required to have a housing component. And if that developer is able to do low income, you should give yourself the flexibility to waive that, to encourage that kind of development. Secondly, on the fee itself tied to the hotel, the study suggests that offices actually create more impacts, more jobs per square foot. But the council's direction is the opposite of that. The, almost all the cities in the study that you've been provided have a fee for office versus hotel that is either the same or less. There's few exceptions to that. It's because it tends to be tied to the impacts. How many jobs does it create? How many needs for housing does it create? If impacts are the consideration, we would ask you to reconsider that and to apply objectivity and fairness to that standard and bring the fee down to at least even with the off, the proposed office per square foot charge. Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Hi, Fred Alabach, 8th Street East. I'm not sure exactly what Bill was proposing about waiving the fee, but, but if, if a commercial developer is going to do deed-restricted affordable housing that has a balanced range of area median income units, that seemed like that would be worthy of some sort of consideration for, because that's exactly the type of housing that's needed here in Sonoma and the county. I was wondering if if these fees are, are generally an end run around building housing in general and extension by the 20% inclusion because if the fees are taken as an option and they cost less than actually building the unit, then it, then it seems like, well, why would anyone build the housing if they could just get out of it for less by paying the impact fee? I might not understand exactly what's happening with this, but if it costs less to get out by paying the fee, then it seems like no one, no one would build the housing and they would just pay the fee because the fee is so much less than it would cost to build an actual unit. So if you're not recouping your costs for having a unit with these fees, then you're getting just a fraction of what, of a house for, for the in-lue fees. And for residential developers, if they can get out of it, then it seems like that would diminish the affordable housing stock for the people who are making a proportion of the area median income. So it, I don't see, it seems like, you know, it's a good idea, but I know that the council chose the lower fees rather than like the $94, which, you know, my, my initial comment about that was so come for the whole amount. But apparently, that, that would have such a chilling effect that no one would, would even want to build anything. So I don't know if the planning commission can say, well, you can't get out, we want the housing, or whether if someone wants the option, then they have to be given the, the option. But it's just some questions I have about it.
Good evening. Bill Willers, 873 First Street West. Mayor Harvey, members of the commission. I, I believe Fred just made a really good point, and that is, don't use the in-lue housing fee as a way of mitigating the construction of housing in our community. The 50% housing requirement on commercial mixed use was put in the development code exactly because it recognized that there was a housing shortage in our community for low-wage earners. That's why that 50% requirement was put into those two zones. So as commercial development was made, housing was also produced to balance that job housing need. If you use the Altamira Apartment Affordable Housing Project as an example, a $29 million project that provides 48 affordable units, those units are costing $604,000 apiece, roughly $600 per square foot. You will never get an affordable housing fee of $600 per square foot. So every affordable housing fee that you put in place is a, is a small, minuscule percentage of the cost that it, it requires to build a unit. On a 10,000 square foot commercial unit, if you charged $15 a square foot, you'd get $150,000. That $150,000 would build 250 square feet. That's $600 a square foot, two bedrooms and a couple of closets. That's why in our development code, we have a 50% housing requirement in the mixed use and commercial area and zones. That's why that was put in place. So I would recommend that you maintain that when we look at the development code. In fact, we turn it into requirements, so it cannot be waived. And, and then I would also recommend that you actually make these affordable housing fees at least as expensive as the most expensive housing fees. Because what essentially what you're doing is penalizing the production of housing in our community by charging an affordable housing fee. All of the housing, all of housing in Sonoma County has an affordable housing fee. Clients pay it every day. But it doesn't pay to produce units unless you accumulate a lot and have the basis to accumulate a lot of money. So keep that in mind as you're considering this. I would, I would suggest $20 per square foot for commercial and for hotel use is a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willers. Seeing one more rise?
Good evening, Mayor Harvey and City Council. Carol Marcus, 873 First Street West. I want to underscore the past two speakers. Just as one more example, in the example that staff gave in their staff report about a 30,000 square foot hotel project with $15 a square foot and a thousand square foot restaurant, at $4 a square foot, you would take in $454,000 in fees. And at an average construction cost of ballpark, $500 a square foot, that would produce one unit of housing at 908 square feet, unit of housing. So I want to reiterate how important it is to maintain the housing component in our commercial zone and that the in-lue fees are a fraction of what can be charged. So, and the other option is with hotels, and it's done in other municipalities, I believe, to charge affordable housing fees for the hotel guests as a way of generating more income for the housing in-lue fee. But just, it's another way of getting some revenues in. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else rising for public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to, bring it back to council. So I, you know, I did hear kind of a question in there, and it's a point of clarification I think is really important. When we're looking at fractional affordable housing fees, this is basically units that were not being built and instead we're collecting revenue for them now.
Yeah, there was quite a few questions, and I'll try to break them down if I can. If I can refer to the first speaker, Mr. Hooper. As we, as I pointed out in the presentation, we're currently, we're currently not collecting anything. So this is new territory for the city. The only obligation any developer has in the city is if you do building a subdivision that's present. If you're doing five units or more, that's the only place where we have a policy in place to require affordable housing, and it's built on site. So what's being offered to the council?
Can you speak into the microphone a little more?
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to repeat that, or?
No, it's okay.
Are we good? Okay, so we're going into new territory where we're collecting fees for the first time for non-residential development, residential development, commercial, retail, and hotel. So you're going to be getting net new money you've never seen before, and there's always going to be an opportunity to raise those fees at some point in the future, up to these maximums you see on the left-hand side of the chart. What your council deliberated on previously was, let's just pick hotel, you could have gone up to $94, and that would have captured the true impact of that development's impact on the need for affordable housing. So what you chose as a council was to come in at $15 a square foot, to not go to where the maximum could be based on the NEXUS study, and collect that money for the first time, for it to be deposited into the housing trust fund.
And to be clear, this is not in lieu of any sort of housing requirement. This is not a waiving of that. This is additional money.
This is net new money, correct. And so you'll be putting that into your housing trust fund, and it'll be building up. Then the council will have discretion based on the things that we've identified in the housing trust fund to go out there and build affordable housing. The, the second piece is that, as I mentioned, you've chosen a fee that's 15% of the true impact, if you will, for hotels. And what I've recommended as staff here is that we get the non-residential fees in place tonight, and then come back if the council so directs for us to then look at the mixed-use concept to see how that impact relates to the $15. Because in the case of the hotel, you're going to have a fee collected for the square footage for the non-residential. The developer basically has the component that's required for the residential side. And so the fact that there's eight units, 20% of And so the fact that there's eight units, 20% of those eight units are 1.2 units. And then the question is, what, how do you get from two units to six related back to the $94? How does that relationship work and what is that true impact? So we'll come back, analyze that, and figure out how that's calculated for a fee if the council wants to do a mixed use blend, if you will.
So effectively, is there a way that we can, if somebody's building housing as well as a commercial development, is there a way we can see how the, depending on how much housing they build, is there some sort of policy or?
Right, because somebody may.
Matrix that we can create that'll churn out how much that reduces the impact fee?
And I think, as I suggested in the staff report, we could have them provide their own Nexus study to show that relationship on a case-by-case basis, or we can try to do that specific to this particular project. But clearly, there is a relationship. The point is, we want to see what the impact is of a hotel on the need for providing affordable housing caused by the hotel project, whatever hotel project we're talking about. So the point being is, we need time to do that based on the letter that we've received, and that's when we're going to come back, not only with an ordinance to memorialize the policy changes from the one to four units that we currently don't have, then we can come in with a resolution as well that embodies the fees for fractionals, for additions, and for multifamily as well.
Do we have other questions on the hotel, specifically on the hotel piece? Do we want to do kind of like a little just comment? Do people feel comfortable with that? Yeah?
Well, if you would pull up slide, that's table four, please. Thanks. I think this is helpful, looking at what the council previously approved, and I think in relation to our peers, which I think Healdsburg is probably a good peer for us, I think our fees, the ones that we previously approved, seem reasonable. I also think that, to the extent that people want to build properties that are over 3,500 square feet, that's quite large, and I think those are, that is a good place for us to charge a fee that is closer to the actual fees that need to be collected. So just in consideration of our Sonoma County peers, I think what we previously approved is reasonable, and I would continue to support it.
Councilmember Huntley?
And I agree. The numbers do seem kind of shocking at first, but looking at it in context helps. I mean, we'll be a little low on the low end, but we did that intentionally because we decided that building smaller houses was more beneficial. And I think that these are very fair. Based on the studies done, we could certainly make them even higher, and I'm happy that we'll finally have this one tool that other cities have been gaining. And I'm shocked to hear that the county has been collecting so much. So that's nice to know. Wonder what they did with all of that. And then I think everything that you talked about looked good except for the additions. I think that additions should be on the exact same level as building a house. So if you are expanding a house from 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, for example, it would be the same sort of differential for that echelon when you're calculating it for that size house. So it's not based on, you're not starting at zero, you're starting at how big the house is and looking at the impact, because the same principles apply if you're taking a small house and turning it into a big house, it's just as like if you built a big house. So that's the only comment I have on that. And then for the commercial, I think looks good. We discussed what our needs are in the city and office and retail, retail particularly since we don't allow big chain stores. You know, it's not exactly robust, and we value our local retail businesses, and I think it was just a policy judgment call to keep that where it is. And as far as whether there was going to be any kind of credit applied, I think it would depend on if there was some sort of quantifiable requirement in the beginning, and if the project was such that theoretically it should be 50% housing. I don't really know how that would work because we're still not getting 50% housing. But theoretically, it does make sense in some circumstances if someone wanted to do more, then there could be a credit.
Are there comments about, staff had kind of proposed or floated the idea of going away from sliding scale to kind of set amounts? Do councilmembers have comments on that, or should we keep it exactly the same?
I'm comfortable with what we previously approved, and I also, I didn't say, but with regard to the office, retail and hotel, I continue to support those impact fees. And I'm certain that a calculation based on which portion is commercial and which portion is residential can be derived, if that's needed.
Other comments from council? No? Okay. I'm probably comfortable where we're at as well. The only thing, I think Rachel's point about the increasing size of the house is kind of interesting. I would be willing to exempt at like 300 square foot additions, just for, you know, middle-class families sometimes want to add a little bit of housing to their home, and I don't think that that's necessarily causing a major impact. So I would be fine with exempting there. For the hotel piece, I mean, I think, you know, when we're looking at any sort of commercial, commercial project, I think exemptions start to apply once you've met what requirements are on the table. And that's kind of where we need to have the conversation is, are all the requirements that were already put in place on the table? If the city as a broad entity wants to change those requirements, that's a separate discussion. If we feel like, you know, say there was a belief that 50% was a lot, okay, we could have that talk. But right now, I think it's, you know, you've got to meet your requirements. I think putting in an impact fee is appropriate. I don't see us getting a lot of office or retail. I think that hotels is kind of where it's at, and I think there is an impact from that. So I'm comfortable with it where it is currently. I think we're probably supportive.
On the question of impact fees for additions, did you, I didn't understand your position. Did you want them to start at a certain point, or you want to leave it just at the way it is?
I would exempt that at 300 to 500 square feet. I mean, I would exempt it definitely at 300 square feet. That if you added 300 square feet to your home, you know, if somebody wants to convert a garage into a bedroom because they had another kid, or if they want to convert a garage into like a little playroom, those can, those become additions to your home. You're not building any additional room at all, but you are adding, you know, square footage to your home, right? It counts. So I would be.
Right now, we're charging 1,200 bucks for that under this proposed.
Right.
But I'm saying, do you agree with that, or you think we should charge zero?
I would charge zero.
Well, just to put in perspective, so if you look at what we would charge for a house that's 2,500 square feet versus what it would be if it was 500 square feet more, it's $15,000. So that's, that's why I would view it as sort of like what size of the house you're starting with, based on that, because if you're saying 500 more square feet is not worth anything, we're actually going to charge people 15 grand if they do it at a certain point. And then between, you know, 35 and 4,000, it's like over $20,000. So there's a, I mean, there's a cost there, and that's the reason it's charged, and I think that, sure, it's useful over the course of people's lives and their houses to add on to it, but, you know, every time we make one of our houses bigger, we have removed one of our smaller houses. And so what we're seeing now is all of our cute little bungalows that we had are now getting flipped and second stories and doubled. I mean, if you look at MacArthur Street, there's a lot of small 750 square foot square houses that are, you know, getting doubled, but the price doubles more than that. So there was, there's a use for us of having what used to be called a starter home, and I think that even if you add 500 square feet to it, you are suddenly making it into a different housing product, which will benefit the people that have it because it will make their house worth more, but then it has taken something away from, you know, the future housing market that will no longer be able to afford it.
I guess the counterpoint to that is that in previous times, people could have a starter home and then sell it and take the equity and get a larger home, thereby freeing up the starter home for the new starter family. But in today's economy, you can't move anywhere, so you can't sell your house and get the next house, which is one of the reasons why people build on to their house. So it's not that that house will become free, it's that those people will either take on more debt so they can have a house that's a size they can live in, or they will stay in a smaller home. But I don't think that if you tell them you need to keep your house small or sell it, where will they go? There isn't, the next step doesn't exist for people because things are so expensive.
Yeah, certainly a conundrum. This is why we need to build more small starter home sized houses, but, I mean, the housing renovations that are happening, like you can't really distinguish between people's motives for expanding a house, and like frequently it is because somebody's flipping it because they want to sell it for twice as much. And it still just raises the point that it's already impossible for, you know, today's up-and-comers to find a place to live. So it's like, do we decide that it's just going to be impossible, so it doesn't matter? Or that it is very difficult, it's difficult for everybody, but recognize that, that this, the making a house bigger puts a burden on our affordable housing market, which is why we charge fees. You know, a fee for 500 square feet is, on here, it's $2,000. I think it should depend on the size of the house, but it's still taking something away from the city.
There's a lot of families in Sonoma that bought in, right after the financial crisis, and got in there, and they're planning on staying here for a long time, but their kids are getting older and want to add a little bit to their house. And frankly, they, these kinds of fees are really painful for them. So I've had a lot of people approach me and talk to me about that, and I think that's worth considering. And in addition, starter homes in Sonoma are not going to be single-family residences going forward. They're probably going to be condos where you can't add on. So to me, I think it makes sense to let somebody build out their garage into some sort of playroom or create a little bit more space for their family.
I don't think that would qualify for a fee.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I've seen in other jurisdictions is, to address councilmember Huntley's comment, Vice Mayor Huntley's comment, if an addition is greater than 50% of the existing structure, that's when a fee would kick in. So they have that kind of a, pick your percentage.
Physically.
It's a proportional relationship issue. You can get up, you know, if you've got a thousand square foot home and your addition is 600 square feet, that's when the fee would kick in. You can pick a number above that.
Does turning a garage into livable space require a fee? And is that counted as a house expansion?
Yeah, but a new habitable square foot.
And would that count against a housing in lieu fee here?
Right, right, you're paying the in lieu fee, yeah.
So, can I?
Yeah, of course, sorry.
Thanks, that's okay. So originally, I had proposed that there would be no fees up to 2,500 square feet because I think that's the size, but we have this document, which I don't think, you know, if you're going to add 500 square feet, although it will be an additional burden, I don't think $2,000 is too much, I would not support looking at the total square footage of the house and making them identical to the other fees, because I don't think adding on to your existing house is the same as brand-new construction. I think those are different purchasers and a different market. And so I can support what we have now. I would prefer if 2,500 or less was exempted, but if not, I could live with this.
But if that house goes up for sale, it'll be referred to with that extra space. It won't just, it won't be, you know, missing 500 square feet. It'll be part of the house when it's sold, right?
Well, yeah, but that wouldn't affect this. The only affordable housing fees are for brand-new construction. So if you sell your house, the 25,000 square foot house or whatever, you incur no affordable housing fees, regardless of their house size.
I guess I was listening, I guess what I heard was, what, what I heard was a little bit different from what I was thinking then, I guess. Okay.
I mean, I was kind of frankly surprised. I really appreciate that we have table four in here, because I was frankly surprised at where other cities are, and it was kind of nice to see that we're, we're in the range of reasonability. And I agree with councilmember Harrington that, you know, I think of these cities, we're most probably like Healdsburg or Petaluma, and probably more like Healdsburg than the other.
Mayor Harvey and council, just hearing your deliberations, another option you could do is for those folks that are, that those kind of garage conversions, maybe you allow a garage conversion up to 250 square feet, or you set some max, and that if, in that instance, you would not charge an in lieu.
I would be happy to.
You could, you could connect something like that in a different way.
I'd love to, I'd love to exempt garage conversions. I think that would be fair. Okay. Broad support for there. And then I have another question for David. On the housing affordable in lieu fees, so you've got 0.2 units, and that incurs a, okay, so it's based on $10 per square foot? How, basically, I'm trying to figure out how these are calculated. I believe in you. Yeah?
Fractionals?
Yeah, the fractionals. How is that calculated?
So right now, you have the 25% requirement, and so if I come in to submit a map request for five units, the 20% requirement basically says like one of those five units has to be affordable. So four will be market rate, one will be affordable, and that will be built on site. So there's no fee because we captured the affordable component of 20%. So when that 20% is applied to, in this recent case, the 1211 Broadway project with six units, they owe 1.2 affordable housing units. So how do you get the 0.2? So in this case, five of those six units will be, will be market rate. One of the units, the 1.0 requirement, would be an affordable housing unit on site, and the 0.2 will be captured in the fee. And then based on $10 a square foot benchmark that you talked about previously, for a 2,500 square foot home, you, they would be paying a $25,000 fee. If the house is larger, it would go up to the other fee that I've put in the example for seven units. So that's how you would do it. And then when you get to eight units, it doesn't really matter because you're having the obligation for that 25% bump up to the next highest unit.
Okay, so is this based off of the average? So let's say I build five houses, I have to build one affordable, and they're all different sizes. Is it based off the average size? Is it based off the largest house?
The average, yeah.
The average of the house? So what if somebody, so if somebody comes in and builds 1.2 units, they build five homes, they build the additional affordable housing units, and they're all 1,200 square foot, and they pay no fees?
Correct.
So we'd capture nothing.
So why does the impact fee stop? Like, why is nine a zero dollar fee?
Because they'd be putting two units on site.
Because it breaks the.
Because it'd be doing, but if they only wanted to do.
Because 1.8 is going to go up to two units.
Oh, because you're rounding up.
Because we rounded up, sorry.
Oh, I forgot round. Got it.
Okay. I mean, I guess we want to encourage developments of 1,200 square foot homes, so the question is whether we'd want to waive that 0.2 fee or if we'd want to do something like, if somebody's bringing in, they're going to do four, they're going to do five homes, all at 1,200 square feet, they're going to pay, they're going to build one affordable housing unit, they owe us 0.2, and they're going to pay nothing for it. We want to encourage developments like that, that's fine, that works. But if, as a council, we want them to pay some sort of impact fee, then we'd have to capture some other way to do it.
I mean, I think that what they're paying is still a tiny fraction of the cost of building another unit. Like, it's not like you're paying 0.2, 0.2, or, yeah, a fifth of what it would cost for the construction, so it's actually a lot less.
Well, I'm just saying, if they, because these are all based, the way that they pay is all based on, on the size of the homes, the average size of the homes that they have, and we exempt the 1,200 square feet, right?
Yeah, but this, I mean, this is, I would say, kind of different. We're just making it that when you can't build, when the number is, doesn't divide evenly into determining how many units you need to build, which building the unit has a much higher cost than the fee would be if we were applying a fee to the square footage of it. So it's, I'm just saying, it's a lot less than if they were actually having to build like that slice of the building.
I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, the way that that is calculated, the total cost is calculated, is based on the affordable housing, the affordable housing impact fees that we have set up. So if they build on this, on number six, right, total unit six, 1.2 units, if this, this fee that you're seeing, this impact fee, is based on all the homes, the average size is 2,500 square feet. But if they don't build to that size, then their impact fee is going to be lower. So it's going to be lower based on the average size. So if they get to all their homes are below 1,200 square feet, they're going to pay zero for the 0.2 units.
I think it's a good policy direction to encourage people to build that size home, which are, so I would be fine with there being zero fee if we.
I just want to make sure council's clear.
Thank you, I wasn't. I appreciated the clarification. Thank you. But I think that's a good idea, that's a good policy direction to incentivize building smaller units.
Okay. I probably concur. I just wanted to make sure we were, because I just realized that just now. Okay, I I probably concur. I just wanted to make sure we were, because I I just realized that just now. Okay, cool. Great. Um, looks like we need a motion.
How do you want to take it, one thing at a time, or?
Well, just just a, I'd be corrected certainly, but we have a resolution that's ready to go. And that would be then a motion to approve that resolution, because it only addresses the non-residential, if we capture that correctly. And then we could have a a direction, I don't know if it requires a motion, to direct staff to amend the affordable housing ordinance uh to then come back, once we've got those changes with a resolution, to incorporate the fees you've talked about tonight.
Uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution establishing non-residential affordable housing impact fees for new development consistent with policies in the city's certified housing element as contained within the city's general plan, and make findings that this action is exempt from the, from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section fifteen oh six one B three and fifteen three seventy-eight B four.
Uh, just point of clarification before we have a second. This is also with the idea that we're going to exempt garage additions.
This, two separate, two separate things. Um, that is with residential. We're just doing it on res right now.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, we need a second motion for residential.
Or like a straw poll or?
Rather than going through each one of them, I think we've understood the direction that was given. We can, if the direction is to go ahead and just make a motion to say to direct staff to amend the municipal code per your discussion this evening, we can go ahead and start crafting that language. We do have to provide notification, publication in the newspaper to make those changes, and then we'll have a corresponding resolution to encapsulate those fees.
Can I get a so moved?
A so moved.
Second? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, I keep turning my mic off. I'm used to being a vice mayor. All right, um. I wish. Uh, I am to item six point one, a regular calendar, city council discussion, consideration and approval of a continued public art partnership with Valley, the Valley Museum, Sonoma Valley Museum of Art for temporary art installation of Sonoma's Plaza and Depot Park for mid, from mid-May to mid-October twenty twenty. An approval of the resolution of approximately ten thousand dollars in funding and implementation. City manager, Kathy Cabriola.
All right, Mayor Harvey, members of council, public, I'd like to invite Linda Keno, executive director of Sonoma Valley Museum of Art, up to the dais. As council knows, we have had three fabulous past successful temporary art installations on the plaza. And Linda's come forward to us again with um some exciting new opportunities. Um, so I will let her go through kind of the slides and what she's thinking, and then I'll do a few wrap-up comments.
Thank you. Um, first off, I would like to thank council and city staff for those three previous very successful public art partnerships. And we would like to um offer the city another opportunity to partner this summer on a public art installation from um May through October. And the artists that we're suggesting are all from Northern California. Uh, the first one is Catherine Daly. She lives in Windsor and she has a um a studio in Forestville. She works mainly in metals and plexiglass. She is an art teacher. She's also a photojournalist and um a professional photographer. She uh suggests that she would like to offer for the installation a piece that is shown on the next slide. Um, that's very similar to um the two that you see there on the next slide, these vertical pieces. And she is um creating a piece right now just for the plaza. Um, the second artist is Brian Tedrick, and um Brian uh lost his, he's a Sonoma artist, lives and works here, and lost his home, rather, lost his studio in the Northern California wildfires. Brian has um worked on our art installations on the plaza, Depot Park, um in the community center before. He created the bike rack that's already in the plaza, and he is offering a piece called Acrobat. When his son was young, he used to come into the plaza and do one-handed handstands. And so this is representing his son doing those one-handed handstands. He's probably best known for his work with Burning Man, um and I I put some examples there in your, in your deck. The one um on the top is is um I think at the Garden Center, but all three of those pieces were uh from Burning Man. The third artist also lives and works in Sonoma. His name is Peter Hassan, and he is um working in metals right now. He's also um worked in ceramics. He's a painter, sculptor, photographer, printmaker, and and digital collages. He's offering three pieces from his cycle series, and um they deal with the environment um and also science and religion. Um, uh, he's offering one large scale piece. It's about ninety-two inches high. And the other two are forty-eight by forty-eight circular pieces. Um, I think we've got a couple, yeah, that's a, that's an actual piece. It's out in his meadow. He lives um nearby, and um he's got these pieces at his home and studio. Those are the two um pieces on religion. Um, they're images from a a Christian stained glass window, um the Quran, and also um the Jewish Tree of Life there. The last artist is Bruce Beasley. Um, Bruce is probably the best known of this group. He is considered one of the um most prolific and renowned artists working on the West Coast today. And his works are in about thirty major museums throughout the world. Uh, he is always on the forefront of technology. He was one of the first sculptors to use three D printing. And now at the age of eighty-two, he's experimenting with virtual reality um and creating his pieces. Um, he's offering either one or two pieces that are carved granite. And um there's a a picture of six of these pieces that were installed in Tiburon there by the ferry. He's offering uh either one or two of those pieces in there um made out of carved granite. So those are the pieces that we're offering, and those are the artists, and we hope you'll consider this um partnership.
And just a few other comments, Council, as you know, how we've done this in the past is uh the museum brings forward the pieces, they then work, um there are certain sites that we've worked out that can be placed in locations on the plaza based on infrastructure and irrigation, et cetera. We then work with the CFAC, your Cultural Fine Arts Commission, to kind of end the museum of what pieces go, that go where. We execute contracts um both with the museum and with each of the artists. Uh, and those are all um items that are listed within the resolution that you would um authorize me to do. The other request is, again, the museum pays to have all the art shipped out and installed. The city's contribution is to help do some of the costs here, and asking the city for up to ten thousand dollars from your council discretionary fund for recreation community services to help with some of the plates and the infrastructure. Our hope is on the back end, we're working on a plan that in the future, rather than putting plates, that we would put in some permanent concrete pads. And that we'd place art there for maybe five months of the year when the art is gone, that we would put picnic benches. So there would be this flex space, and then we're kind of, we're getting rid of this issue of having to replace lawn, which is difficult to do in our kind of um unique and organic art uh grass that has been built over time. So um, and then Lisa Jansen, our community events manager, would work with Lynn and her team um on the implementation. So there is a resolution for you to take action on um tonight if you are so disposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, do we have Councilmember questions?
Is the, would the CFAC continue to play a role every year, or how would, how would this work with them?
Yeah, I think one thing we had wanted to do is kind of put together a permanent, not a permanent, put together a program that's that you all would bless, and then frankly, maybe there's a certain amount of money each year, and then we don't have to come back to you. It's just a program that comes, and we kind of haven't gotten to that point. Um, I know the CFAC is very supportive, traditionally with this program, so it's been a nice kind of fit to have them participate in helping do the sighting of the of the pieces. And then there's also a reception that's hosted and a lot of PR, et cetera, that the museum then does um to bring individuals come to, to come see the art.
Vice Mayor Hunley.
Um, I guess you kind of answered half my question, but I was wondering about why it was coming out of the council discretionary fund, since this has been a a repeat uh expense. And I thought that we had just settled it as a line item, like in the community fund.
We haven't at this point. That's where we've pulled money in the past. Um, and currently in your council discretionary fund, there's ten thousand or ten percent that sits there that's currently not been used this year. And then there are also, because of the increase in the, in the T O T funding that we had this this year, there's actually an additional about twenty-five thousand that sits there. So again, it could come, it's really going to come out of that recreation community services. It could come out of either pot. Um, and it is something I think going forward, if there's interest, we could just program, you know, kind of maybe a max budget and then see what happens.
And what um I am assuming, well, would the installation of the concrete pads, would that be for this this season, or is that like a future?
It's not going to be done by May when they want to install this, these pieces. Um, so it would be something that we'd be looking at doing like on the back end, so rather than replacing the grass in October. Hopefully, we'd have everything teed up, have the engineering done, and then be able to go through and do the concrete pad installations at that point.
And then have um have the locations been plotted out yet?
We have um looked at some locations um with Lisa Jansen, uh and they're primarily piece areas that we've used before. Uh, and then we, what we've done in the past is is present those possible locations with maybe a couple of variables for for each piece to the CFAC, and then together it's a very collaborative um process to to cite the pieces.
I know when we do the budget, we usually, there's um, maybe you can, I'm not, this is going to be pretty rough here, but there's a part that we waive every year about a certain portion of the budget being dedicated to the arts. Can you remind me what that is? If you know. I know that I can remember waiving it, but I.
So I think there was a certain amount of funding that was set aside for permanent art, if I recall. Um, and again, when we came out of the recession and kind of the ability to do some of those, some of those items. So I mean, that's part of the reason we wanted to put a program in place, and then we could look at some, set amount, and how do we um how do we encourage them, kind of streamline this program?
Maybe we can do all that by revisiting whatever that policy is and seeing what makes sense in light of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Linda, thank you so much. I still can't get over the deer. I miss the deer.
I miss the deer too.
I know, they're sending, I, well, everyone enjoyed uh the deer. But do you approach artists, or do they be, come to you? How do you do, how do you actually do this, Linda?
Um, both. Um, I, ideas come from all sorts of different sources, and I've been hearing from people uh around Sonoma that they would love to see all local artists, and so that's that's where this emphasis came this time. Um, last time it was um a desire to see female artists. Um, so uh I, these are artists I know. Um, I had not met Bruce Beasley, but I I specifically approached him and asked him, and he's, he's very willing to um to to offer a piece or two.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
With reference to the deer, uh, we had kids kind of climbing all over them. Which was adorable and scary. Um, and I'm noticing the the first piece that we have here has these big, long poles. Um, one, how tall are they? And two, how sturdy are they? Because I could see them being attractive for both kids and um intoxicated adults.
Um, the pieces are designed for interaction. I mean, these are not pieces that are in a museum. People uh interact with public art obviously very differently, and they are built for a lot of interaction, for people to climb on them, pull them, push them, jump on them, et cetera. And um they're all very sturdy and built specifically for human interaction.
Wonderful. We've got to bring it up for a public comment. Thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to make comments in a second, but yeah. Bring it up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, I'll bring it back for council for comments. Councilmember Cook.
Well, I'll be supporting this, and I want to thank um the work you do is is very well. Being on the council for seven years, I remember when we didn't have this. The biggest problem is uh people want to keep it. It's like the deer. I actually thought about keeping one of those deer out there. It looked really nice. But um I really congratulate you for listening to the public and and seeing what they want, and have a local artist. I think that's a great idea. And I'm really looking forward to when we do have um permanent insulation places to keep, keep the cost down. So I will be supporting this, and I want to thank staff and everyone for the great work.
Councilmember Harrington.
I will also be supporting this, and these look like beautiful pieces, and it's always a real treat. Uh, you know, I kind of like also love the people that like it and the people that don't like it. The debate is really kind of fun. And um I just want to give a extra reminder about um when we first started this program, of course, the museum was so instrumental, but also Kathy jumped on it, and she said, we can do this and put it together really fast. And so a lot of the reason I think we were able to start this was because Kathy brought it forward and made it happen. So thank you very much, Kathy.
Vice Mayor Hunley.
I am excited to see this partnership continue, and I will be enthusiastically supporting it, and I look forward to seeing everything installed.
I as well. There's seemed to be five points that we're looking at here.
Oh, great. Well, I just want to say, I want to say how much I like it too. Uh, I think it's wonderful. I think it's just a real asset to the town, and the fact that it's constantly changing, and there's new theming and and everything. I love that they're local artists. I was kind of excited. I didn't know that that was really a theme, and then I was like, oh, they're all local, and it's wonderful. I I love the big wings. We have those still at Broadway Farms, and it's just sort of the the nursery there, and it's just absolutely so gorgeous. So huge asset to this town. Um, this is just a wonderful thing that everybody enjoys. I hope we get to see one of the installations this year, because that would be a kind of a sight for sure. Um, so thank you for all your hard work, and Kathy for bringing it forward, and council for supporting. Do we have a motion for this?
Um, so move.
All right, roll call vote. City Clerk Rebecca Ba.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're going to take a short break, a little five-minuter, and we'll come right back. All right, we're almost done. All right, bring this back to order. Yeah, I'm doing a big gavel. Don't worry about it. Um, item six point two, hold a workshop and provide feedback regarding public engagement on Broadway, State Route 12, restriping options and potential requests for Caltrans, uh, request to Caltrans for consideration in 2020 slash 2021 paving and restriping project. City manager.
Good, Mayor Harvey, I'd like to introduce Colleen Ferguson, our Public Works Director and City Engineer. And she and her team have been working hard um, on looking at some restriping options that um, is kind of once every 20 years opportunity in front of, in front of us. So with this, I'll turn it over to Colleen.
Okay, Mayor Harvey, members of the council, let's talk about Broadway. So um, we're, uh, in this workshop consulting traffic engineer Frank Penry. And I will give an overview of the Caltrans paving project that's coming up pretty soon. We'll talk about opportunities um, with that project for restriping Broadway, specifically between MacArthur Street and Napa Street. We'll present three different restriping options and then provide information about the online public engagement tool that we're proposing to launch this Friday, um, March 6th. So as far as the, the project over, what?
One of our CSCC or former CSCC commissioners is on the, uh, the picture here. That's Matt Metzler.
Yes.
Signaling a solid left turn there. Well done.
Yes, a huge bicycle advocate, yes. Um, so the team understands that Broadway is Sonoma's main street, as well as a major view corridor to City Hall and the lovely Sonoma Plaza. We also understand that Broadway can be a challenging transportation corridor for bicyclists and pedestrians. South of the plaza, the Broadway streetscape and striping could be enhanced to improve the pedestrian and bicycle experience and increase public safety for pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists. Caltrans will soon start construction of a project to rehabilitate pavement on Highway 12 through Sonoma and beyond. And this paving project will create a blank canvas for street markings and a rare opportunity to change the way that Broadway is striped. So we'll talk, review the Caltrans paving project and the work that's already been done regarding, they call it multimodal transportation, you know, so cars, buses, bikes, peds, um, along Broadway. So the Caltrans project, you can see in the yellow highlight on the map, the extent of it. So it goes from Vallejo Avenue, which is up near Boys Boulevard, all the way through Sonoma down to Napa Road and Leveroni Road. And this project, it's um, much needed, as we all know. Um, it's part of Caltrans, they call it a State Highway Operation and Protection Program, um, acronym SHOP, that funds the repair and preservation, emergency repairs, safety improvements, and some highway operational improvements on the state highway system. And the SHOP protects the enormous investment that has been made over many decades to create and manage the state highway system. For the 2018 SHOP project list, Caltrans is planning to invest 8.7 million dollars in rehabilitating the pavement on um, State Route 12 in and near Sonoma. Caltrans' current schedule is to have the paving project ready to bid in June and start construction in August 2020. And to just be clear, that's starting construction. They have a lot of things to build besides just paving the road. I'll talk about that next. So the paving won't be happening in August 2020. So in addition to the paving, of course, after the paving goes down, they'll need to put down new pavement markings. Um, it's a law that when paving is done like this, all the pedestrian ramps that join the paving have to be brought up to ADA standards. So where they're not currently ADA compliant, they will be replacing the, um, ped ramps. They'll be doing some minor drainage improvements, updating some signs that don't meet current standards. And also installing Hawk High Intensity Activated Crosswalks at several locations. I have on the slides Riverside Drive, um, you know, at the big turn by El Pueblo. Um, Third Street West on West Napa Street and then on Broadway Patent and France Street. Um, we, I'm pretty sure they're also going to put one at Malay by the high school. I just couldn't get confirmation of that today to put on the slide.
This is the work they'll be doing in August?
Uh, it's part of the entire project that will start construction in August. I don't know when each of these pieces would be installed. And other stuff that Caltrans has been working on is um, a new District Four, we're in Caltrans District Four pedestrian plan. And you might remember that um, on January 8th, the city put information out to the Sonoma community so folks would know Caltrans wanted input for this pedestrian plan. And people responded and they did provide information that's shown on the slide. And they, uh, they commented on poor and missing, on Broadway specifically, poor and missing bike lanes, signs, signals and markings not working and people not yielding. And they reported several hazards along Broadway. So that's what they're working on on the pedestrian side. It's not on the site, but they do also have a District Four bike plan. And the goals of the Caltrans Bike Plan are to improve public health and promote active lifestyles, create connections to people's destination or transit, and reduce traffic congestions and greenhouse gas emissions. Highway 12 through Sonoma is identified as a mid-tier project for bicycle improvements. And now I'm going to turn it over to our consulting traffic engineer Frank Penry. And Frank's a California Registered Traffic Engineer. He has a lot of experience working on projects throughout Sonoma County and well beyond.
Thank you and good evening. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the context and how we got here. Uh, on the slide is portions from the circulation element from 2016 approved by council. Um, so the circulation element had identified uh, that Sonoma's size, scale, climate, um, and topography are ideal for bicycling within the city. Uh, in many areas, uh, the infrastructure lacks the facilities to provide uh, these, these bicycle facilities and ultimately rendering bicycle inefficient uh, under those conditions. Broadway to MacArthur Street is specifically, or actually Broadway from MacArthur Street to Napa Street is, uh, was specifically identified to be reconfigured with three lanes from the existing five lanes. Um, this was to redistribute the traffic and provide uh, safe and efficient pedestrian areas. Uh, this was specifically without bicycle facilities on Broadway. Bicyclists do use the sidewalk. Um, and then space for the bicycle facilities themselves on the roadway to help keep the sidewalk safe and efficient. Um, you'll see some alternatives there that were identified early on in the process. Let's see here, uh, the pedestrian facilities and crossings. So when we talk about the safety and aspects of those sidewalks are specifically identified and designed for pedestrians. The, I didn't, thank you. Uh, and they are safer without the bicyclists. The crossings uh, under the current, or under the current configuration creates a very long distance. This is uh, exemplified at the intersection of Napa and Broadway where the crossing distances are very long. Along the roadway, those same crossing distances exist. And in some cases, uh, those have been enhanced. And as uh, Fergie had identified, some of those would be further enhanced with the Caltrans project. The lane configuration being redistributed and the bicycle facilities, along with the parking facilities, uh, can actually reduce the pedestrian exposure. While there are bowl bouts out there along the roadway now that help reduce the crossing under its current configuration, these additional facilities and markings will actually reduce the exposure to those of just the three travel lanes, thereby increasing the pedestrian, uh, improving the pedestrian facilities and crossings. Uh, signs and signals, uh, as we, we talked about is included in the project, uh, would also help to alert pedestrians, drivers that pedestrians are present at those locations. There we go. When we talk about the bicycles, uh, it's important to note that the stress and uh, types of facilities and how those things, comfort level of the cyclist. When we look at different types of facilities, we run through this, this pyramid here. Uh, the traffic stress is obviously based on several factors, including speed limits, travel speeds, the roadway width, the number of travel lanes and traffic volumes on those lanes. Increasing the separation between the bicyclists from the moving traffic helps to improve the cyclability, uh, the comfort and reduce the stress of those cyclists. You see here in the parrot, the, our bicycle pyramid, that uh, under normal circumstances, a shared lane, no bicycle facility is representing less than or about approximately 5 to 6%. These are the strong and fearless bike riders. They are Lycra clad. They are riding to morning, we're spandex, latex, yes, spandex, thank you. Uh, the second tier, the yellow, uh, represents about 9% of the confident adult bicyclists. Uh, these are riders that uh, uh, would typically ride in a bicycle lane as opposed to the shared lane. And moving down, we have another tier which represents about 55% of the interested but concerned. Uh, these are cyclists with their children, uh, less confident. Uh, they would like to cycle but strongly prefer off-street or separated facilities and uh, may not bike if they don't feel safe. This is where we move to a, uh, other alternatives of bicycle lanes. And the 30%, which is kind of a national standard here, kind of the no way, no how. While these people do not, uh, these pedestrians, obviously not cyclists, uh, do not, are not interested in the bicycle facilities themselves. They do understand the, the needs to travel along with those. So move to the next slide. Uh, so talking about the uh, conditions out on the roadway, the travel speeds, the traffic volumes. Uh, we have a posted transitional lane just north of MacArthur where it transitions to 25 miles an hour for the remainder of the roadway as it travels north to the plaza. Uh, it carries about 8,000 vehicles a day on an average annual basis. Uh, this is bidirectional. This is all the traffic over the course of the day traveling in neither direction. Um, on peak periods, we'll see as much as 10 or 11,000 vehicles. Actually, I'm sorry, that was a separation. When we talk about the three-lane uh, alternative, reducing the travel lanes to three, having a northbound, a southbound and a turn lane in the middle, uh, this has a very easy capacity of accommodating as high or even higher than 11,000 vehicles. Didn't get into a lot of depth, but we use the level of service here A. Um, so A is like a letter grade. A is good. As those levels of service decrease, they go down. And um, this, at this point, we were talking, we would be saying that 11,000 vehicles could travel very easily along the segment of roadway, uh, without any incurred delay. Peak hour volume, uh, 840 vehicles an hour are anticipated in the future per the general planned volumes. Uh, and lane saturation of less than 1,300 vehicles in an hour would still be acceptable under the uh, traffic volumes that I mentioned for a level of service A. The comparisons, uh, the three-lane uh, configuration. As, as we know, Broadway does a lot of this in and out of four lanes uh, as you travel north of Napa Road, Leveroni Road. Um, at each of the traffic signals, it widens to four, reduces to two. Uh, once you get north of MacArthur and uh, the roadway is then five, uh, five lanes. It actually is in that transitional period where it's traveling, uh, the, the volume there, uh, as I indicated, was about 8,000. Other portions of the roadway of Napa or of um, Highway 12, uh, so in the Napa Street, West Napa Street, that averaged because of the uh, higher utilization, that actually carries an average daily traffic of about 11,000 vehicles and it's three travel lanes. And then out towards Aguacaliente, uh, Highway 12 carries uh, 14,000 vehicles in that configuration as well.
Um, thanks. When, uh, when were the traffic, were there were traffic counts that were done?
These are, uh, Caltrans actually maintains traffic volumes for its state highways.
Oh, okay.
That's where these volumes come from.
And what does it mean that they maintain them? I don't know what that means.
Uh, every year, they come out with a, uh, uh, average annual daily traffic for the roadway.
I just want to make sure, like, do we know, was it during the summer? Did anyone look at a weekend? Do we have any idea if this is like, you know, what, where these numbers are from?
So we've looked at the actual more specific to a peak hour traffic and you can make assumptions and infer uh, what your average daily traffic will be. The Caltrans volumes are actually based on an average annual basis. So they're really giving you that year average, uh, while there are peaks. And I did mention, uh, the peaks, that's why I was just distracted by the 11,000. We do get peaks as high as the 11,000 vehicles, 10 to 11, it's actually under in this segment.
Yeah, I would assume that we have a lot of peaks because we have way more people on the weekend than during the week and also based on the season, yeah.
Yep. Transition to the slide here. Uh, so while we're talking about a, uh, an outreach program now, we actually have already been uh, doing some outreach on this program to get some ideas. Um, in June of 2019, uh, June 3rd, we, in fact, we actually came to, there was a city council briefing on the project. On the 7th, we actually uh, put on the city's website that there would be a community uh, information available on June 11th, which when we were, did a workshop with the businesses to begin, ended with the farmer's market, had a table, had lots of building blocks to kind of understand where the community was coming from and the different aspects of the roadway design, uh, restriping would be. Uh, Sonoma Index Tribune had done an article on June 13th. And uh, most of our input that was received from the public was in the month of June, June 7th to 19th, uh, regarding our outreach effort at that time. regarding our outreach effort at that time. Summary, and this is by no means scientific. We were out there just to have conversations, to understand where people were. If you didn't have the opportunity to come to the booth, I mentioned building blocks. And so we had large maps of the roadway and where and how different things would look along the roadway using a variety of different tools. We had little overlays, we had some smaller maps, and just had that conversation. We also did a walk, two or three times over the course, actually several times over the course of the day.
In, in over 100 degrees, but you know.
It was a hot day. We, we went out and walked the site. Luckily, we were actually utilized some, some city staff to mark off some of the improvements to give an idea of what the representation of different travel lane configurations would show. We were out in front of Pete's, and it, it actually was a very good location to kind of show how the different lanes could be configured at that location. And you'll see in the picture, actually, that's, that's me out there on that very hot afternoon. The, the information, the summary that we received from the public and the businesses was a general support for protected bikeway, which I'll get into what that is specifically. There was also an opposition to restriping the roadway in its current configuration. Folks wanted to see more parking, if it could be accommodated under the new or any revised configuration. And then there were several no comments.
Just to add to that, Frank, the, there's more detail in the summary of the remarks in your packet. And so you can see, a lot of people visited the table at the farmer's market but didn't really provide any input. And then some of these are synthesized from emails that came into the Public Works email address that we gave to the public as a place to direct their comments. So it ranges the gamut from, yeah, we, we want protected bikeways, and to, don't do anything, and I'm gonna fight hard against that.
Moving along. The three options that we have for this particular outreach, I will get through and go talk about each of the options independently. It's important to note some of the similarities. So all of the options retain the operation of the controlled intersections. When I say the controlled intersections, these are both the beginning of the project and the end of the project. The Napa Street-Broadway intersection is an all-way stop right now. It does have a, no more than one movement going to any one of the one approaches. The northbound approach has what is a left turn and a through right turn. All of those would be retained. While we talk about lane, you know, reconfiguring the roadway, one of the things we thought was important was to retain that, those two lanes going north to the plaza. One, to keep the operation of the intersection, but also to eliminate any potential impacts to neighborhoods by people being delayed or not being able to get to that very critical right turn pocket to then go to East Napa. So all of those things are retained. As well, parallel parking is retained in all three of the options, as well as the bus stops and transit stops that exist along the route. The three options that I'll be talking about is the existing configuration, the five-lane with a standard bike lane. As you'll see, we have to shoehorn that in. The buffered bike lane under a three-lane configuration, and a parking-protected bikeway under a three-lane condition. So this, I'm sure, shows up a lot better on your handouts for those looking up at the screens. The image at the top is the existing configuration. It's existing picture of the street at about, I think we're looking southbound, about the, the post office. The, the cross-section, oh yes.
Madeline, can you turn your microphone on?
Is that a bicyclist on the sidewalk?
If it's in the picture, it very well may be.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at the picture, my picture's not big enough from this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It is?
When we were spending time those few days on Broadway, that's where I saw most of the bicyclist was on the sidewalk.
I think we're talking about the mock-up.
Oh, geez, I see that as well, yes. But we did see bicyclists out on the sidewalk. So in, in illustrating this, this alternative, the two cross-sections, the one over the top, that is the existing configuration. What you see there, and this will be the same in all of the illustrations, the grades cars on the outskirts, those are parked vehicles. That's not a travel lane, that is parked vehicles on the grade against the sidewalk. Now, they'll move slightly depending on the configuration, but the grade vehicle is a parked car. The, the existing configuration, yes, we did show that there are the brave and confident bike riders that are actually out there on the roadway in what's kind of a long or a wide parking lane in some cases of, along the stretch of roadway. But also, there were cyclists on the sidewalk, so you did see that cyclist.
And I don't know if it's an urban myth or not, but I know them Caltrans paved here many years ago or the last time. They didn't pave to the edges where the curbs are and bike rides are bad. So I'm just, you know.
Not a myth. The bike lanes on Broadway are horrible. They're gravel.
Yeah, there is a deficiency. And so that, that, obviously.
Putting it lightly.
The, you also see that we denoted the red cyclist there to denote back to the pyramid, that that's the strong and fierce, the bravest, the confident driver, bicycle rider. Underneath that first alternative is the second, of actually our standard bike lane alternative. This actually is the roadway configuration. What we'd need to do in order to retain all five travel lanes, the two in the northbound, two in the southbound, the two-way left turn lane, is actually to consider a reduction in those travel lanes. Those are currently Caltrans standard lane widths of 12 feet. The parking lane is a little over, I think it's about 13, yeah, it's less than 13 feet actually in many portions of the roadway. In order to fit the bike lane in as a striped marked bikeway, we actually need to make some concessions, or ask Caltrans to make some concessions in their roadway striping configuration. You could accommodate this by shortening or narrowing the outside lanes to 11 feet, or even make a change to the two-way left turn lane in the middle of the roadway, make that 10 feet, in order to accommodate a standard five-foot bike lane.
The, the information I've received from Caltrans staff at this point is that without a request from the city, they would go forward with what's shown on the top cross-section on the slide.
Also wanted to point out, you'll see in the visual simulations, you'll start to see some green bike lanes. Now, this is a very common treatment for bicycle lanes, bicycle facilities, however, we use it sparingly. So while you'll see it for illustrative purposes, to denote where the bike lanes are in either the visual simulation or the cross-section, the green lanes would be more reserved throughout, really at locations where there's going to be an interaction between vehicles and cyclists or intersections, or to cause additional awareness where those cyclists are.
What's the feeling like from Caltrans if we ask them to reduce, say, just the center turn lane? Do we think that that would be easily accepted, or do we think that that would be a difficulty?
The, the leader of Caltrans right now is very much into active transportation. And so when we've talked to Caltrans staff that are working on the paving project, about the city coming forward with a request, they think it would be very well received. It's just that, as I talked about, the direction that they have for their project is to improve the paving. But it's the SHOP program, this is what they do. They are doing a pavement rehab project.
Thanks. Thank you. Next slide. Our second alternative here is the buffered bike lane. It gets its name from the buffers that exist between the travel lane and the parking lane. Because of the width of Broadway, which varies in width from somewhere around 86 feet to still, where the bulbous are, narrows significantly, and then it's also about 82 feet, which is the width that we used for this to be conservative. The buffers are shown, four-foot buffers are shown between the parked vehicles, the bicycle lane, and the travel vehicle. Yes, ma'am.
Fire away.
You know, I, I, it's been, I won't even admit how long it's been since I've ridden a bike. But bicyclists seem to think, I feel, and I could, there's some bicyclists on here, but to be closer to the curb and put the car in, by the cars. So, I mean, I don't know, you're saying Caltrans is open to that, to something?
Do you mean like, there's a car and then a bike lane and then the curb?
And car, no, curb and bike, car, parked, and car.
Like the car is on the outside to the car and the bike is on the inside of the parked car?
Yeah, that's the next, I think that's the next option.
Yeah, 'cause this scares me just to look at it. All right.
We're getting there. So with this alternative, what it does is it recognizes with the buffer between the bike lane and the parked car, the door zone. This is an area which, where not all buffered bike lanes. Buffered bike lane really creates the buffer between the travel lane and the bike lane. With the additional width we have, we're actually able to create a door zone buffer, the bike lane.
Oh, okay.
And the travelway buffer. And, and as indicated by our bicycles, red and yellow, this actually starts to transition into the interested but concerned area. We're transcending, adding more comfort to the bicycle facility confidence for the less confident riders. And we'll transition to the last option here. And this is the parking-protected bikeway. So this is the facility where all of the cars are squeezed to the middle. So we have the three travel lanes that we've talked about all along. We have the parking adjacent to the travel lane. We're actually able to, with the existing width that we have out there, we're able to provide a little bit of buffer. An average parking lane is about eight feet wide. And what we have here is about a 10-foot parking lane, but we would go ahead and park that such that the cars would park closer to the buffer than they would the travelway. And, and as we, we have here as well, we have a buffer between the parked car and the bike lane, which is now on the curb side, so protected or separated from the travel traffic, or the roadway traffic. There's a buffer there. And then what we've also done here is, because of the roadway width, we're able to not count the width of the bike lane as the part of the gutter. Now, this is a very common practice everywhere where we do bike lanes. And when we're trying to deal with a five-foot minimum, which is a state minimum for a bicycle facility, really what we get is two feet is the gutter pan and three feet is the travelway. And not only in this location are you talking about the instance where paving or the lack of paving may exist and create that a rough ride, which you actually have is a difference in grade. The grade of the roadway itself and the gutter are typically at two different grades or cross slopes. And, and that is actually where a lot of debris ends up, is in the gutter pan. So in this particular alternative, we're actually able to utilize the full space of the roadway and not count that two-foot gutter pan. And as we, tried to keep this little theme going here, this is also a interested but concerned, and they're protected cyclist. So another thing we mentioned with facilities like this is that eight and 80. And so that is, what type of facility would you like to see your eight-year-old riding on? Or potentially having your 80-year-old parent, grandparent, using the facility as well? So this is the protected facility. And if there aren't any questions about those alternatives, I'll hand it back to Fergie.
Okay, so now you've had a preview of the options that we would be putting in front of the public with this online public engagement tool that again, we're planning to launch on Friday. And it's an online public engagement tool so that people can participate when it's easy and convenient for them to do so. They don't have to show up as a designated time and place for a public meeting or arrange for childcare or elder care so they can get away from home. Our goal is to get lots of community input from March 6th through March 27th, and then consolidate it and share it with you so you can make informed decisions hopefully at the April 6th council meeting. And so you may be thinking, oh, this online public engagement sounds great, but how will people even know about it? Yeah, so, so we would, of course, post it on the city website, the city Facebook page. We're talking about an ad in the Sonoma IT. So the IT readers would know that this online portal is there for them. And we're planning to make flyers, hand them out along Broadway, send emails to a lot of key stakeholders that are shown on the slide and in your packet, and then make some posters and get them in the schools, and post them at city hall, at the council chambers, at the community center, library, vintage house, bike shops. And we figured you probably have some ideas about other ways and places to get the word out, so we're looking forward to hearing that. And then, okay. So what's the thing gonna look like? We're gonna use a tool called Social Pinpoint. It's designed to do exactly this kind of thing. So when we get all this input from folks, we won't be sitting down trying to go through all these hand-printed things and figure it out. It, it has a lot of built-in tools to help us package the information in a way that's gonna make sense to you and to the public when we share it back out to the group overall. So we'll provide some background information, kind of like we did with you today. And then we'll ask people to tell us a little bit about themselves, how they use a Broadway. At the top, it'll have some kind of city appropriate picture, and then heading, have your say on restriping Broadway after paving. And, and then again, back, background, and then questions. Age group folks fall into, how do you currently travel on Broadway? How often do you use Broadway? Are you a resident, business owner, someone who works along Broadway? Do you live or work in Sonoma or out of the area? Do you just visit Sonoma? Do you or any of your dependents attend a school in Sonoma? Tell us about your comfort level as a driver, cyclist, or pedestrian. So it gets to, as a vehicle driver, as a cyclist, as a pedestrian along Broadway, what's your comfort level, if you have concerns about safety, some options for picking that. So, and then getting into the three options and asking people for input on the three different options. And then, and we do have boxes for people to just put in comments, too.
Will there be a certain amount of education on the kind of the stuff that was brought at the beginning about the amount of roadway travel, what's required for a three-lane, what's required for a five-lane, how much we have, peak hours, those kinds of things? I think that's gonna be a really important piece.
Yes, so we'll have the background information first, and then people get into the survey.
They're gonna have to take a quiz to prove that they read that?
That's always a bit tricky. I think the other thing that I've seen agencies use too is you can actually take some clips of the video, like from this presentation, or do a clip, and then you can, 'cause sometimes folks, it's easier for them to watch the video and see some of that. So that's also part of those links that folks would have.
It's a good idea.
Great.
I wanted to ask a question, if you don't mind. The, the green stripe for bicyclists, is there anything fluorescent in that for the, at nighttime, like arrow or something that you can actually see at night?
Yeah, they have this like bioluminescent roadways I've seen.
So the, the pavement, thermoplastic is what we use for the white markings. Most of the white markings and yellow markings on the roadway are called thermoplastic. For the green bike lanes, because it is a greater area, we use a slurry. And so it's a paint slurry, but it does get crystallized. We actually use reflective spheres in that, the same way that we do with the, the thermoplastic. So there is a reflectiveness to it, but there's also, at certain intervals, we'll put bike marking, which is a thermoplastic bike marking as well. The green actually shows up really well.
But it doesn't light up, it just shines back brightly when lit, reflects, there's the word, reflects. Okay, so, one of the things in, in my discussion this, this morning with, are you, can we go to questions? Or are we, we still working through? I don't wanna cut you off, Colleen, if you're, you're still working. All right.
Sorry, Mike. And just as far as the survey, it does have boxes. So it's not just clicking. People can also write what they wanna say as part of the survey too. And I think that's important, that people can have the opportunity to say whatever they wanna say in our platform. They don't have to go to Facebook or Next or someplace else to say what they wanna say to the city. They can say it right here in this tool. And then we go from that to the next steps. Synthesizing all that information, bringing those public engagement results back to you. It's your April 6th meeting is our goal. And then council can take action. And then um, council can take action not to. Do stuff on Broadway, but to request that Caltrans restrike Broadway in a certain way if you want to um, with their paving project. Um, and I think we all need to keep that in mind as we're talking to the public and we certainly go through the tool that. Caltrans takes care of Highway twelve. It's a state highway. We can make recommendations and request to Caltrans and they will make the decision on what to do with the request that they make it from the city. Okay, now um, just just a little reminder that the team is well aware that Broadway does serve as the main street and a view corridor to the. Historic Plaza in City Hall. And we also understand it's a very important discussion for the community and that none of us take it lightly. Um, and we are planning a robust public engagement program to gain input to assist the city council in making a decision. On what to request from Caltrans. And Frank and I are happy to answer any questions and look forward to hearing your input.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this and I appreciate the plan for where we're gonna go with public comment. Um, one of the things that um, I started calling people that I know that are bikers basically uh, with discussing this and I and I probably should have directly. Talked to you, Colleen, and I apologize for not doing that uh, a few weeks prior. Huh? Oh, I should have called you about biking too. Um, and one of the things that came up with the option three. Where we have the cars parked in the protected bike lane is that basically most people in society are used to parking right against the curb. And when we create this protected bike lane, that's what they're gonna do. Uh, certain people, especially that are coming in from out of town that aren't used to it, to educate them to not do that is gonna be difficult. And especially when we're not having a physical barrier. And I'm really concerned that if we go with option three, that people are just gonna park right against the curb and that's gonna block the bike lane. So I mean, I guess the question is if if there's council direction, is there maybe a, you know, should we remove an option if there's something that we don't want people to go for? Because I don't know if people are gonna think about that when they're supporting this.
Yeah, I think Frank could talk about the very different options that you see in different communities as far as these protected bikeways. And and I'd love to hear what council thinks about different options that way. A lot of places do have a raised curb, a whole row of reflectors along the um, that buffer between the parked cars and the bikeway. Um, some of them have planters and all kinds of interesting things in that space to make it very clear. If you're gonna park your car, you don't go over there. There's something in the way. And and you stop earlier. Um, when I looked at some of the examples for that and pictured people driving along Broadway with all these. Little plastic reflectors along the way, I'm like, that does not look appropriate for Sonoma and our view corridor. Um, but Frank can talk to you, um, other options that are available.
But those would be additional expenses, right? That's not something Caltrans would provide. We would have to go in and build those structures.
I I think as a community, we should decide what our vision is um, for. What we would want Caltrans to put down on Broadway after they pave. And um, Caltrans can come back and tell us what they think in terms of cost of extra features.
So I can, I can just briefly address this. So in many communities and installations. Um, the bicycle uh, facility closest to the curb, but protected, um, usually does come with some kind of delineation delineators. Um, as as Fergie indicated, parking uh, or uh, planters, delineators being the with a white, you know, three foot tall. Um, or it would be wide in this case, but spaced at some interval. Uh, we started to consider that and what other deterrents could we use? So while those get installed in many of the installations across the US and. Actually a part of a recommendation, but Caltrans does allow that the parking itself is that protection from the vehicles. And since there are no time limited parking spaces, um, for a good portion there, that that we could anticipate that cars would be parked uh, on the roadway. Now, in in lieu of that, um, the stencils, stenciling of the bike lanes, we can actually uh, we can put a stencil in the parking lane. To indicate that that's where the parking is and also utilize uh, a stencil in the bike lane as it would be green in many locations. The other alternative that we talked about was actually putting um, additional signage. So we, as a driver gets out of the car and moves across, they would see a sign at at level where uh, like a parking meter height sign. That would indicate uh, how the the lanes would be utilized. So there there are alternatives. It's just at your discretion as to what you wanna do.
Councilor Cook, you got a question?
Yeah, at first I was all excited when I, this came up a couple of years ago and they were talking about it, but it sounds like no. Not any part of this is like the having an island possibly at Broadway in Napa. This is just all striping. So. The council, we don't have any um, input to Caltrans as far as if we think there should be more pedestrian state safety. It's just I I've had a lot of individuals say that when you walk across Broadway, even if you put bicycle lanes there. By the time you leave from one to the other, it's a long distance. And if there was some kind of a safety format like an island where people could have refuge, but it sounds like this isn't part of this discussion.
Well, there there, um, I I see this as progressing in stages potentially that. We know Caltrans is gonna come through and pave Highway twelve. That's their job. They're gonna come through and do that. And they're, after they do that, they're gonna put marks on the pavement. And if we wanna put, we want, if we want to request that they put marks down differently than they are now, we need to ask them to do that. Um, if they do that and do a configuration like this one or like the buffered bike lane. Where there's only three three places with moving cars. Um, it opens the door, I think, to do other things to even make it safer for pedestrians. Just reducing the places where cars are moving to three instead of five lanes will make it safer for people to walk across Broadway. But it also provides the opportunity to have islands parway through that long street crossing. Um, for pedestrian refuge in the future, not as part of Caltrans paving project, but as the next stage.
Yeah, cuz those red bicycles go pretty fast.
Just on this topic, may I ask a question? I think this is one piece that may be helpful for council and public to understand. In this option in order, because it is different than what our norm is, would there, would there need to be more green paint? For identifying the bike lanes in this option versus the buffered option? Or do you see the amount of green paint being the same? Just, you know, people have had a sensitivity about the historic view. And so that's just, you you've said there'd be, it wouldn't be all green like this long green stripe. And I am just. I think that's a a piece that we may wanna be clear either to public or council if. If how much green paint one way or the other, if that's something that's important.
The green paint, regardless of who's paying for it, is not a uh, a cheap item. So we do use it sparingly, but not not because of the cost. But really because of the impact. So as as traffic engineers, we tend to put that paint. At locations where we want to improve the awareness, uh, and not unlike uh, certain types of crosswalks, high visibility. And so in this case here, uh, the green paint is usually reserved for areas in which there would be a potential interaction or awareness that we're trying to emphasize.
It's, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, it seems as if the green is becoming a norm. I mean, you're seeing it more and more. So I guess, I don't know. I don't know why I would park in the green. And I I'm sure our police would be diligent and ticket you. So I don't see there's a problem.
I just know, I heard from somebody who was in Austin and they did this and cars were constantly parked in the bike lane.
Fat ticket, maybe they'll never do it again.
If it's happening, we have constant visitors to the town. And I'd just be concerned that we'd have regular. Issues where people are parking there. I mean, once there's a lot of cars that are parked correctly, it becomes rather apparent. But I just, I would hate to do all this, create this big beautiful bike lane and regularly there's a car. Sitting in the middle of it. Um, the other question I have is. Let's say we get, yeah, and I I think it's a real possibility that we get very little support for doing any sort of changes to Broadway. And we gotta go back to option one cuz I I think no matter what, we should at least support option one where we we shorten a road and do a a full service bike lane there. Would it be possible to say, go down to three lanes from Napa to Patton? Um, or Napa to Hotmuck? Cuz there really isn't a serviceable bike lane there. And add the bike lane in and then go back out to the five lanes afterwards. And that's kind of the main pedestrian area. People are crossing at Pete's and things like that. Um, and then also you would have, you'd be able to have bike lanes there that would connect to later bike lanes along. Cuz it's pretty wide. It's just that it's not paved once you get out of that area.
So uh, the only issue that really comes up with transitioning is that it takes time and 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 distance essentially. To transition from two lanes to one lane. So you need to give drivers adequate uh, distance and notification to merge. Um, and we wanna be very careful and not have mergers occur where pedestrians are going to also be in conflict. Uh, it's one of the.
Too many distractions.
Yeah, you don't want this happening at the same time you could have somebody moving across the the travel lane. So the opportunity and where. Um, it becomes, it could be challenging to find the right spot to transition between the two. We do a transition, you wouldn't see it on any of these sheets here, but as I said, MacArthur has four lanes, uh, two lanes each direction, the two way left turn lane. Uh, at that location. And so we do a merger just north of that to get to the three lane configuration. Um, whether that were um, extended, is you flipping that or you're?
I would keep it. So basically from MacArthur all the way to Patton, it would remain as is. Cuz it's fairly wide on on the other side. And then once you approach Patton, it would shrink in. That bike lane would be able to snake in. And then you would go. And then you'd 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 basically go to, you'd remove the lane on the on the southbound side. And then push it to three and you'd have bike lanes on either side there. Cuz that's where it's really lacking. At that point, you're in the road.
At that location, that's where there are bulb outs. Um, the bulb, the sidewalk has uh, extensions, curb extensions is really the uh, correct more uh, more correct term where the crosswalks are. So it's really about finding the right location, driver awareness, you know, putting signage and whatnot to to do a transition like that, but it's really kind of a hybrid.
I just think it would be another option cuz cuz further down and it maintains that kind of broad Broadway feel earlier on. Um, so just if we get, you know, broad direction against this from the public. Um, and I really think, I I'm so glad we're doing such a broad public outreach program because I want, you know, if anybody complains about this and they never heard me, well, I can say, you know, it's your fault. Uh, which I think will be good. Um, the other, the other thing uh, that I had a question about was um. There was the the question of diagonal parking and trying to increase parking. And that was, if I understand correctly, was rejected by Caltrans. It's not a viable option. Or is that something we could do?
It went in stages. So there is a Caltrans document from, what was that, twenty fifteen? That that recommended the three lane configuration for Broadway, um, you know, near near downtown and. Mentioned diagonal parking as a possibility. Now, when we approached Caltrans more recently about diagonal parking as an option, they said they couldn't support that. And then Frank also looked at the mentions and tried to squeeze in some diagonal parking to see if maybe we could talk them into it since we had that document that said, yeah, maybe diagonal parking. And it didn't work very well.
Yeah, doing diagonal parking on both sides. Uh, so when you do diagonal parking with a bike lane. Um, that's a difficult situation because you actually then need to go with something called reverse in diagonal parking. Because the bike lane on the trail, on the on the roadway side and angled in parking as traditional pulled in. Is not consistent uh, from a safety standpoint. There's view constraints and so.
Unless it's a protected bikeway.
Well, that's, so the alternative to that is to push the bike lane, yes, thank you, pushing the bike lane to the curb side. When we do diagonal parking on both sides, it runs really tight about how close the cars get to that bike lane.
Other council member questions? Great, we'll bring it out for public for public comment.
Just another comment since council did mention um, diagonal parking. Um, when Frank said he couldn't fit diagonal parking on both sides, um, he, well, we could bring forward an option that would have diagonal parking on one side. You know, then there'd be more parking. And I just saw potential conflict from property property owners um, on whichever side wasn't getting more. Um, parking and it could just um, put a damper on the whole idea. So we didn't explore that option.
I mean, I think it's put it on the other side of the Shell station, right? There's a gas station there and the other side's more Pete's and businesses, but okay. Yeah, I'd I'd be interested in exploring that option, one sided diagonal. But, you know, it might cause a ruckus. Public comment. Is now open.
Um, I have a question about whether the traffic count uh, accounted for possible toll avoidance on Highway thirty seven. And stacking up Napa Road and having traffic all come jamming through Sonoma and up Highway twelve. Uh, whether the traffic count accounted for that, it's already bad for people avoiding thirty seven on Napa Road in the last, you know, three or four years. So I expect that to be getting a lot worse if they get a toll road there. Um, and also was curious about, uh, there had been talk in the past about a traffic circle up by the plaza and I wonder if that's. Anything that's involved here or pedestrian lights on the plaza was something else that had been uh, talked about. Um, as far as a squeeze down from from four to to two lanes at Patton. Every squeeze down that I've ever been to, people speed up and compete and race to get to the squeeze down. So if you're gonna have that right at Pete's, you're gonna have people aggressively trying to get ahead of each other right when there's people there um. Crossing the streets. I would say that that's probably not a good idea because that squeeze downs just bring out the worst in people. But that's just a couple of comments.
I would like to suggest that a squeeze down be adopted as an official term of art in traffic. Thank you, Fred.
I also think it's a good idea to do the diagonal parking and I would love to see uh, Broadway go down to uh, one lane of traffic each way. Because where there are two lanes, people already do that. And I don't know how many times I've been in the middle of a race I didn't know I was in uh, with other drivers. Uh, the the biggest problem I think I would see is down next to the plaza, that gets jammed up really bad anytime there's an event. And if you get rid of that extra lane where people would be turning right, uh, I think you would have a really, really bad track uh, traffic situation. That's just that last two blocks, I think, though. I think the rest of it should be just the three lanes.
Quick, quick, your name, sir. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other, any other members of public for public comment? Good. Do we have any slides that show the Broadway intersection and how we would be, how we'd be doing that? Because, you know, if you're talking about going towards Broadway or towards the plaza on Broadway, it would remain the same. So there'd be a right turn lane and a straight and a left. Um, the change would be you'd remove, cuz you wouldn't have a left right turn lane. That would just be the left turn lane. And then there'd be a straight right. And then the other side going north away from the plaza towards MacArthur would just be a one lane. And that's where the lane removal would be. So. And some people even think that that would kind of improve traffic because there can be a little bit of like, is that guy gonna turn right into the lane that, the extra lane that's there? So that may improve that. We've we've heard that in discussions too. Alright, council member comments? Vice Mayor Huntley.
I think this is all very exciting. Um, and I wouldn't, I would wanna keep um, all of these options on there just to see what the public has to say. I would put myself in the third category of cyclists. And I know a protected uh, lane. Would make me more likely to ride a bicycle. So I I would like to hear what people have to say. And at the end, we're just taking feedback from the public. And if it's determined that, you know, we wouldn't be able to execute it properly, we could always make a different decision. But also one sided diagonal parking intrigues me also.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I think it's good to have all the options on there. And I do like the um, diagonal parking also on on one side. I know that Gary Edwards was talking about just going out there and painting stripes one day, see what would happen, but he never did it. So we didn't have the experiment. But no, but I think that it it would be something that I would like to have asked. Um, cuz hopefully if public wanted it, Caltrans would um, comply.
Councilmember Harrington?
Um, thank you for all of the work on this lengthy process. Um, and I would like to see all all the options put forward and see what the public has to say. And uh, we'll find out.
I I agree. I think it, this is pretty, this is pretty exciting because it's, I I think I must travel on Broadway. Seven times a day everywhere. I'm always on the road. So I, the only thing I'm asking is don't make it Fifth Street West. That's so bad. It's the worst. I and I know there were good intentions. I'm so sorry, former councils, good intentions. But that's a mess. And the minute you get into it, there's no getting out. You have to go right up to Highway twelve. It's a mess. So I don't, I don't know. I just, there's no turning back, I know. It's a mess. So I don't, I don't know, I just, there's no turning back, I know.
Okay, um, yeah, I think this is a great project. I'm glad we're going forth with it. Obviously, I have concerns about option three, but I think maybe with the proper signage, we can get it done. If we had a barrier, I'd be very supportive of that. Um, I think this is really important, as we're starting to see e-bikes kind of come alive, and people are traveling more and more and more on cycles, so the more that we can provide those options. And this always reminds me of, I'm on the, I'm the vice chair of S C T A, Sonoma County Transit Authority, and what we found was that ninety-five percent of trips, all trips in Sonoma County are under five miles. And that's extremely bikable distance, and Sonoma's an extremely bikable town, it's very flat, so providing that sort of options for our kids and our, we've recently heard a lot about bike cycling kids these days, so if we can give them a lane and get them off the, uh, the sidewalk, that would be great. So I, I look forward to hearing what the public has to say, um, and I look forward to kind of providing these, these options and, and trying to encourage more cycling, so I think that would be wonderful.
So, thank you, council, for your feedback. Just a, a couple of thoughts. One, the diagonal parking, um, idea, I think what we may wanna do is maybe just, one, the engineers gotta figure out if they can fit it. I'm not sure that it may be an image or an option, it might be if there was an opportunity to add diagonal parking, is this something that you'd be interested in? So maybe, uh, more general question in order to be able to get the im- the imagery out by this Friday and have enough time, so.
On that, on that line, I think we could also ask about diagonal parking and make it clear it's one side, because that's what we have room for. It would be associated with a protected bikeway, because I couldn't, I would have a really, really hard time supporting all the diagonal parking head-in around the Plaza and then, you know, back in, it's just too confusing for folks. So it would have to be head-in, which would mean the protected bikeway concept, diagonal parking just on one side. Um, which side? So we could ask folks, if we were to have diagonal parking, do they support that? And on the west side or the east side? You can look at, oh, Pete's, it should be on that side. Oh, but then, you know, there's restaurants on the other side and it, the property owners will get very interested in how it impacts their property values.
Um, two questions, uh, so does diagonal parking mean, mean that parking would be removed completely from the other side, or still be parallel? Just the same. Second, um, with the protected bike lane, uh, would the idea be that both lanes would be inside of the diagonal? Like, two lanes? Or would they still be scattered?
It, the, the northbound bikes would be on the east side, the southbound bikes would be on the west side.
Well, could they, to put them both on the same side, where the diagonals are pointed, so then no one will ever park in the bike lanes?
We, we kinda considered, um, whether or not a two-way cycle track, that's, that's kind of the reference name for what you're speaking to. Um, whether that made sense, and there really wasn't, um, there's kind of a, a lot of interesting intersections. We have T-intersections and whatnot, uh, traveling up, and, and one side kind of made sense, but then when we get up to the Plaza, it's the two-way, two-lane configuration, and leaving the Plaza, it, it's, there's, I think that has fewer street connections, but still a lot of driveways and other things. If it were, if, if driveways were more consolidated, I'd maybe consider making that a recommendation, but it's not my recommendation at this point. Um, we can actually accommodate parallel parking with the buffered bike lane or protected bike lane on the parallel side, and I would say be consistent, do protected on both sides. And the diagonal would need to have the protected as well, so.
The other concern I have, just thinking about the protected bike lane, is what if you wanted to make a left turn, and you've got cars, you gotta wait for the intersection? Anyway, this is very interesting. I think there's a lot to discuss here, and I'm, I'm excited to have the discussion further with the public, and, uh, thank you very much. You, you got direction, you're good?
I think good direction. I just do wanna thank Mayor Harvey, who, this has been our ad hoc representative of the council over the last, um, number of months in this project, so, thank you.
And I wanna really thank the, the hard work of, of Colleen and its friend. Yes, okay, good. I'm so bad at names, so I'm glad I, I got that one. Uh, so, yeah, I, I really appreciate all the hard work. I think it's been great discussions and, uh, really fascinating and.
It's just one more question for council, as far as the public outreach, because this is what you guys do. You, you did a lot of this to get elected, right? Are, are you seeing any, any missing stakeholders or, um, places we should make sure we have a poster?
Can you put it up again, the slide? And you're gonna do, uh, Nextdoor and Facebook and all that?
Yes.
What's the period of time this can be open?
March sixth to March twenty-seventh, about three weeks.
Um, do we do, um, sponsored posts on Facebook?
We have, and we would for this.
Best Sonoma sign, good idea.
Yeah, I, I, I like all these options. Um, I'm really glad we're gonna look at school buses in Sonoma County Transit. I think bus riders are often bikers. Um, really encourage you to reach out to, uh, the, the teen center, uh, Boys and Girls Club as well. Um, I'd love to hear what the kids think about this. Um, the, the Sonoma Bike, or Operation Bicycle has a really good kind of connection with the broader biking community, as well as our, our, our bike shops, and, and there may be not just bike shops, but there's, there's bike tour groups that may not have their own bike shop, that may be worth just kind of asking what they think. Uh, the hotels as well, I think, I don't know if that's here, but like the Lodge and the, and the, and MacArthur Place, I think are stakeholders in this. Um, because they all have bike rentals and, and that kind of stuff. Um, and make sure you're reaching out to the, the businesses on the Plaza, because this is gonna affect them a lot, they're gonna have a lot of opinions on this. Um, I've talked to some of them, and they're concerned, uh, about it. But I think if we were able to say, we're gonna add more parking with a half of it being, uh, uh, diagonal parking, even if it's like five spots, they're gonna be excited to hear that, because that's their big, uh, concern. Um, I don't have any other ideas. I've shared pretty much all the ideas I have with you guys, uh, about this, so.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Knock on doors, that always works. Thank you so much, I appreciate all the hard work.
Is it possible to turn the air conditioning off? I feel like it's like sixty-one in here. I, my nose is very cold.
Or you feel hot, then you're like done.
All right. Item six point three, discuss, consider, and possible action regarding additional security enforcement and maintenance near the Haven homelessness facility in the Field of Dreams, um, adopt a resolution approving a budget, budget adjustment of approximately thirty-three thousand dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts and expend funding for security and oversight. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, members of the council, members of public. So, um, this is a continuation, um, of conversations we've had recently looking, um, at both security enforcement and maintenance, um, near the Haven and the Field of Dreams. So just as a reminder, at our last February nineteenth council meeting, council directed three things. One, um, they, you approve security funding for two more weeks, um, which takes us through tonight's meeting and asks to kind of come, come back and provide some updates. Um, and I'll talk about that one more in a moment. Also then, um, you directed a safe parking ad hoc with some key stakeholders, uh, to look at the safe parking program, be back in thirty days. And then also directed me to be back in ninety days, kind of with a work plan or roadmap on how we might look for a new location for additional, or, um, locations for homeless services, um, uh, that could be at a different location than the Haven. So, um, over the last ten days or so, some brief updates. One, um, in front of you is a resolution, um, to continue, um, the security funding we have. Um, and again, we had talked originally for, um, about sixty days, so right now the resolution would take us through April seventeenth, and then there's some additional costs for trash bands and towing and signage and a little bit of contingency. Um, one thing that, uh, conversation I've been having with the last week with, uh, Bob Smith, who's our code enforcement manager, is an opportunity to, um, look at how do we enhance code enforcement services. Um, and, um, right now we have ba- basically a halftime code enforcement service, and I've been transitioning the city prosecutor. There's an opportunity for fairly, um, modest amount of money next fiscal year, and we've got enough in budget this year um, to basically take that, um, code enforcement position and basically bring it to full time. So I'm still working through the details, um, and one option, depending what council's interest is, because again, the private security company, the goal was to create some stability, have a very visual, um, presence out there as, um, over the last few weeks, and I think that has worked well. Again, it's about just under twenty-four thousand dollars to carry it all the way through, and I think we're about five thousand dollars and now I think is the first bill I've received. So, one option, if council's not comfortable doing the full amount, um, I do believe by the first meeting in April and maybe even earlier in March, um, I could work through an arrangement with our code enforcement to bring forward, um, an enhancement in code enforcement services. What the code enforcement person then would be doing is not just being down by the Field of Dreams, but they would be at the Field of Dreams. They actually have the ability to sight and could do, whether it's, um, parking or, uh, smoking or drinking, any of those types of quality of life, and they could be present not only, um, at certain times that we may want down at the Field of Dreams, but also Depot, and the larger presence would be at the Plaza. Um, and this is something I think council's talked about and wanted to do for some time, so this might be an opportunity to move forward there. So, uh, but it's gonna take a little bit of transition time to put that, to put that together. Um, the other item then is in terms of, um, the parking, safe parking ad hoc. Um, pleased to say we had a meeting last Thursday with Councilmember Aggermonte and Cook there, in addition, um, to members from Sonoma Overnight Support, um, Field of Dreams, and representatives of, um, the youth, um, sport com- sport teams. So we had a good two-hour meeting, we're meeting again this Thursday, and we'll, um, continue to be looking at review and refinement of the safe parking program. Um, and then on the broader issue of kind of long-term services and locations, um, I've not begun the conversation about long-term locations yet, but there have been some interesting conversations between a, a number of the city managers looking at, um, the issue of homelessness governance in the county, and how cities can have a broader voice, um, at the table, which I think is a really important part of this conversation. Um, and there appears to be a willingness from Sonoma County on, on that as well. So there's some broader regionalization conversations on homelessness that are underway. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, of the council.
Questions from council? None? Seeing none, I'll bring enough for public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak?
I personally think that code enforcement would be, uh, far better expenditure of money than private security. Uh, these people that are there that are causing problems and giving the homeless community a bad name, they don't care about what law enforcement does. They don't care about what the community thinks about them. Uh, they really do not, do not care if there's a rent-a-cop out there. Uh, if the kids aren't going to, uh, respect, uh, um, private security, there's no way you're gonna get a bunch of junkies to do it. No way.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address as well, sorry?
Todd, out in Shelbyville.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Todd.
I'd like to mention apropos of security, that, um, I didn't know much about the Los Guajolcos Village, and I found out that, uh, that there at the village, um, that apparently a lot of homeless women had suffered, you know, predation and sexual assault on the street at the Joe Redota Trail, and so they actually liked the Los Guajolcos Village because they offered them a measure of safety. So then in terms of security, it might be worth it to think of, of having the security be for homeless women or, or homeless people who are, who were prey for other predators. So that, so that the security is something that, that's, you know, afforded to, to all vulnerable people involved. That's just something that I, that I learned at, about Los Guajolcos that I didn't know, that I thought, oh, they put these guys out in the middle of nowhere and they got no services. Well, actually, some people actually liked being in the middle of nowhere, because it was kind of a sanctuary from, you know, being on the street. So that's just a, a note about security.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else for public comment?
Mayor Harvey, council. Um, my name's Joey, I live on Watmore Road. We've met a few times over the past month or so, or two months. Um, I just wanted to know, recently Gavin Newsom opened up S D C or put it on a list as an option, and that came up in the last meeting, and we were gonna look into maybe what those possibilities were, and I just wanted to know if that had happened or if that's still something that we could talk about as an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? See, you gotta go ahead and close public comment and, and bring it back to council. We had a question from the audience there.
Yeah, in terms of S D C, appreciate the question. We don't have any other news other than it's been put on the list, and in terms of timing, um, I think informally, there's been, I've heard a little bit of, and I'm not sure if this has been posted somewhere, council may have a better sense of whether it's being looked at for a safe parking location, but the broader location of services, I think, is still a ways off. But it's definitely, you know, as we look, you know, one thing is we, as the city managers are meeting and looking, there's kind of conversation of needing, um, we have kind of subregions, we're such a large county that, um, our needs are similar, but some, there may be some, some subregions, so we have to look at locations and service delivery. So I think it's a to-be-determined at this point.
Yeah, it's warmness. Thank you, I appreciate it, Kathy. Do we have comments from, from council? Councilmember Harrington.
Well, um, just on this issue generally, I think that, um, it has been put into the forefront of everybody's minds that the valley needs more services, period, and that that cannot be accomplished by the city of Sonoma acting alone. So I think there have been a lot of people that have come out, uh, to put more thought into the amount of services we needed and where those might be, and, uh, so I think we're at the start of that process, but, you know, that's one positive. I am uncomfortable approving security for an ongoing period of time without a plan, and I understand it takes time to make a plan, but at the end of that, they'll just be, I'm not sure how the number, the amount, the amount that we can pay for, I'm not sure. It doesn't take us to giving us enough runway to come up with the plan on the long term. So I'm not sure it really makes sense to continue security for the requested period of time, which seems to me to be pretty arbitrary and not connected to changes in behavior that will take place at the field. So I don't, I don't, I could support it for another couple of weeks, but I don't know that there's been an articulated plan about how to, once we stop being able to afford it, then what happens?
Yeah, so, you know, the security, the, the vision of security was to kind of stabilize the situations, create some new, kind of clarify the rules, um, and work with the Haven and Field of Dreams to, um, do some of the, um, get the more management the entire area that needed to be done. So, in terms of, you know, it is gonna take some time to move through the whole kind of use permit process in that time, let alone the longer term. So, uh, the, I mean, the security, I think we got a great firm, but it, it's expensive. It's not a sustainable option, and they don't have all the tools in their, in their toolbox. So, uh, you know, I do think we could be returning, um, to council, um, for sure by the first meeting in April, but maybe even by the March twenty-sixth meeting with a contract for code enforcement and a role in, for them to providing some services. It's not, um, it's not the, all, all the answers of what's happening out at the Haven, but it is, I think, a beginning of, um, providing, I think, some of the broader response that we can do, not only to that area, but to the, the rest of some of those quality and life enforcements we need.
So you imagine that after, there would not be a gap between the, um, private security and the code enforcement, that it would be a seamless transition?
I would like to not have a gap. So that's really what I'd like to be able to do is, and maybe what you do is, you are approving a maximum here, and then what you're doing is allowing me the time to bring you that code enforcement contract, and this is a max, and then hopefully we're gearing one up and one down. So I would not be walking out and doing a, a contract with the security firm through April seventeenth. You could authorize a bunch of the money through that amount, but I would be basically going back to buying maybe another two weeks, knowing that's gonna take me at least that time to bring you kind of a contract, and then working through with uh, Mr. Smith to, um, put together the actual full contract, and then creating a transition time.
Because I think that makes more sense. I just don't wanna get here at the end of, you know, mid-April and say like, okay, we don't, we haven't, we don't have a plan, so we need to pay this huge amount of money for another sixty days or whatever, so.
No, I, and let me just be clear, I do, um, I share that concern completely, um, and I do, I have every confidence that for sure by the first meeting in April, but maybe even by your March twenty-sixth, um, I could bring you forward an item that would then create the transition.
I could support that.
Great, I'm gonna go to councilmember Cook, before we do that, we're gonna need notes on heat stroke, cause it's super hot in here now. Uh, so if we could.
I like it.
You like it, okay, cool. I, I could use a little A, or just a off of any additional stuff, we could open the door. All right, sorry, councilmember Cook.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this resolution tonight because I think we have a volatile uh, situation at the Field of Dreams and uh, the SOS. Um, but I did talk to the city major today and uh, we discussed, um, I really do believe that uh, we have a system in place if we can use our code enforcement and the quicker we can do that, the better. But I wanna make sure that we have security. I'm really concerned on what's going on, on over there and I do love the fact that code enforcement would be able to write tickets. Um, I think as a broad base, one thing I found out today, talking to the city, city managers, you know, with the code enforcement, there is cost recovery on some of our vacation rentals. I think we really need to bring this whole component back to the city of Sonoma and make sure that our code enforcement's being used, uh, utilized the way that it could. It's something that as we were in talks with the sheriff's department in our um, police contracts, that, you know, there is a quality of life issues here in Sonoma that um, our code enforcement can help and this is a perfect situation over here. But I'll be supporting this tonight because I just wanna make sure that our children um, are protected and the SOS and the clients are protected. I don't want anything bad to happen over there. Um, and I'm very fiscal responsible, but I can tell you when it comes to this, this is money well spent at this point in time.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, some of it is such a simple answer, you know, you can't ticket somebody for smoking if there's a no smoking sign, that's, that's there. Um, and I'm concerned and I'd like the chief to comment possibly, if it's appropriate, that um, a code enforcement officer is not really, you know, alright. So I, I wanna know what connection will they actually have to your department? Something that will get them a quick response sometimes, because I think some of the people that you, that have been seen out there, you know, don't go by the rules and they have a lot of issues, so I just guess I'm looking for some kind of a um, confirmation that, and I think the code enforcement officer makes sense, but we don't have signage, so there's nothing to cite anybody for. So I just wanted to know if there's, I need an assurance, that's a word, that, you know, the code enforcement officer ha- will have quick access to the police, like a walkie-talkie or something.
Good evening, Mayor Harvey and city council members. Um, well, we did have a meeting early and uh, the mayor and I walked around and we discussed exactly what you're talking about and just like our VIPs, uh, our CSOs and our code enforcement, even though they're private contract, they do work out of our office, uh, we back them up a hundred percent. So uh, Brayden, who is out there at the Plaza, at the Casa Grande parking lot, um, and recently, more recently walking the park, uh, is fully confident and he just, one phone call away to call us and we'll be there in a second, so. Uh, yes, I think it will work, I think having code enforcement out there, uh, especially more, providing him more hours will make a big difference and the park, we've seen the big difference. Uh, Kathy, Kathy from SOS has done a great job and uh, I think as long as we put that going forward, uh, it will continue to be that way. There's just a few bad apples that we just need to correct our behavior and we start with code enforcement and uh, you know, and then if it comes to law enforcement to, to arrest, if that's what it takes and we have the legal right to do that, then that's what it will take. You don't look too happy, so.
Well, you know, I just, you know, I don't think that's what Brayden was, Brayden or Brandon, Brayden?
Brayden.
I don't know, I don't, I mean, I agree, I think it's a much better idea and because it disturbed me when I found out D Block Security refers to the most violent prisoners in Alcatraz, that's what a D Block is. So when I saw the name of the company, that was upsetting to me, but um, I just wanna make sure whatever connection he has will get him a response, you know? Because these pe- some of the people that are there, I'm sorry for them, but you know what, they aren't part of this program, they're just trying to, whatever, doing whatever they do, so it's not, we can't expect.
And you saw some of those reports and, you know, it's our, some of our community members that, you know, some teenagers, uh, and some other people that were, that were part of that report that were causing some of the problems, so it didn't have anything to do with SOS. So um, yeah, the, so those are the things that I, you know, I was just talking to Marty and says, you know, just, we're gonna have a meeting with the coaches so they know where to call, how to call and that's something that mayor, the mayor and I talked about, they need a number to call, describe the people who are causing the problems, smoking the marijuana or whatever they might be doing and then let us come in and, and deal with them.
And I think when we had the, the meeting with uh, councilmember Cook and I, it was really helpful that the coaches actually gave SOS the schedules because now they know the different, you know, the different um, young kids that are there and we have, they have a better idea of the attention they need to pay to everybody, but you know, be more diligent, so I appreciated that, that seemed to make sense. The Field of Dreams people and the coaches seemed to be happy about that.
Thank you, it's the communication, I think that's working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What if I call you right now, chief? Will you answer?
Uh, I wanted to thank the subcommittee for um, working on this, um, and for uh, Chief Rodriguez, for all of your help with it, I think it is great that the city wants to get more involved and give SOS some backup, I think they could have used it a while ago, but we're here, so uh, happy to be moving forward. Um, code enforcement is also something that we've been talking about for a long time, ever since we um, you know, passed our big smoking ordinance uh, four years ago and we have um, been talking about the lack of enforcement on that ever since. So it is nice to hear that we have resources now to expand our code enforcement and that uh, is something I certainly um, support. Uh, and then um, I agree with Fred on your comment, you know, the whole point of the safe parking program was that people were looking for a safe park to sleep and women uh, who are homeless have a dis- depressingly high rate of sexual assault and it's, it's an, and it's not just from other people who are unsheltered, it is from a wide variety of people who are preying upon them because they are so vulnerable. So I think that uh, a little extra safety for everybody is good, um, and I just hope that we continue to move forward with the larger uh, and more challenging issue of figuring out how we're gonna be proactive about helping people and I think that working together with um, probably it's gonna end up being other cities is the route to go because it's not something that we can do all by ourselves, but something that we need to be a part of, so.
I just have one more question, I'm sorry. Um, I, are there any plans uh, through the city manager of considering um, additional funding for the SOS, especially because of their needs are, are growing? I know a lot of stuff is going on at the county level, um, and I, and I know that we're, you know, there's an action of trying to look for other uh, places for, for this service, but I just wanna know, what's that gap? We, we were just talking about a gap, so what, what's there for them through anything that's available? Cause it's up in the air, everything.
Yeah, and so the broader question of what the county has available, I, I don't know at this time, cause they are doing reductions, I think of like thirty-four percent. Again, uh, the, this one-time funding that was provided this last year was all bundled into one year with a little bit of carryover, so um, I know there, I don't recall off the top the cost, but I know that, you know, I wanna say it's about twenty thousand a year or something is what the safe parking program was costing SOS, I know it's a thousand dollars a day, and sorry, not a day, a thousand dollars a month for the security at night and my sense is that would be something that would be continuing. So, I mean, that might be something if the council subcommittee wants to talk about that, you could talk about that and bring it forward to council for consideration. Um, you know, clearly Field of Dreams has also had some impacts this last year as well, so I don't know, there, I mean, again, the, the place for that would be the Wrecking Community Services Fund, that would be kind of the, the natural place. Um, and that's where council you, we, the one-time twenty thousand the council gave to the Haven last year, the year before, my apologies, I'm forgetting which fiscal year, but that came out of that, that funding source.
And I just have one quick last question, sorry. Could you explain the makeup of the leadership council? You probably don't wanna discuss this, I don't blame you. I'm just, the number and who's on it?
So the leadership council, the homelessless leadership council is the continuum of care, which is the governance body that is overseeing federal funding and state funding regarding homeless services. That, there was a transition a couple of years ago and so because that, the governance structure and decision process used to be far more involved with the homeless nonprofits making some of those decisions, the county changed that process two years ago and I think there are two, if not three, members of the board of supervisors. I think there is, um, and I think there's four other members and I would have to double check this, I think there's someone with um, homeless lived experience and then three members that come from the um, twenty-five member technical advisory committee. One of those individuals is the assistant city manager from Rona Park, who the city managers asked to have placed on to kind of represent cities' interests because direct cities didn't have a, uh, someone at the table. So that is the structure at this point.
Why I'm asking the question, thank you.
I just um, thought, I wanted to say one thing about the SDC that I heard was that um, they were, the county is moving forward with a safe parking program there, but because the infrastructure is so out of date and can't be used, they can't do any mo- any greater use than a safe parking program until they can figure out how they're gonna repair all the infrastructure, that's just what I heard. Um, and then, I was gonna say, I can't remember my second point, but uh, on the funding front, I just wanted to throw out, the last time we did this and we pulled it out of the rec- uh, community recreation, uh, I thought it was an odd choice and I think that, like it doesn't make sense to come out of that category that's like, you know, discretionary positive activities and to put this up against it, so it seems like it would be more like public safety.
Yeah, well, the only um-
I think we just did that because we had money in that account.
We, we call it our, we call it the Recreation Community Services, so like, it's recreation and some of those broader community service, like s- the, some of, the Ecology Center obviously does their, that's both recreation and parks, so it could, again, it could come straight from general fund reserves, there's no magic there, um, but that's where we did fund it a couple of years ago.
Great, um, I'll be supporting this as well, I do think that code enforcement is the right way to go, um, I think long-term, that's, that's kind of the, the right solution. I really appreciated the opportunity to meet with the chief today, um, walked around, visited the Haven, kinda discussed his perspective on everything that has been happening there, the historical view and everything and, and I encourage everybody to do the same if you haven't already, I'm sure people are very uh, connected with the chief as well. One of the things we really talked about was, you know, the, the chief was expressing, yeah, I received an email, there was an altercation that, that had happened um, uh, about it and, and one of the things he was expressing is, I just wish people would call the, the non-emergency police line and for me, I don't, I don't know that I know that, that number. Uh, so I think um, if we had some signage out there that had specifically, if there's any sort of incident that, that is occurring, please, uh, please call the non-emergency police, we could put it, you know, near the ball field so coaches can see it, um, if we could have that kind of information, I don't know if council's supportive, but I think that would be really good so that they're interfacing and the police are aware of what's going on. Um, I think having signage out there is really key. Um, I love our code enforcement guy, Brandon, um, he's Brayden, I, I love him so much, I don't know his name. Uh, he's a, he just seems so perfect for the job, every time I see him walking around, I'm just like, that guy should be code enforcement, it's perfect. Um, and uh, it's, it's great and so especially as we're getting a, uh, as we're getting, you know, dispensary in town, I have some concerns about what's gonna happen with marijuana with a dispensary in town and so having additional code enforcement resources would be really great. Um, so I'm, I'm happy that we can do that and they can split some time. I know the, the police chief has talked about having additional kind of uh, police officers circling through there and that's something that uh, we're supportive of and so would love to see that as well. Uh, I gotta say, when I was out there today, it looked very clean, very safe, um, looked a lot better and even in the email that I got about the altercation, the, the individual who emailed me stated that he felt like things have been better, significantly better, but in this case he was down there and, you know, there were people smoking marijuana. The, the reality is, is some of these people are associated with the Haven, some of these are not and a lot of times they're not and so we have to be careful about where they are and I think that's where the reporting will come in and be really crucial to it. Uh, I love that there's direct connections with the ball field and the Field of Dreams, I think that that is super important that we have that nexus and that, that kind of conversation. Um, so I think that we're at the beginning stages of, of working through this, this uh, this concern that the community had, I think that we're taking effective leadership and effective action on it to, to kind of quell the problem and then we've got long-term uh, issues that we gotta deal with and uh, and long-term solutions that we gotta come forward with, but right now, I think we, we do the se- security as a stopgap, I think your suggestion is very smart to just go with, you know, a certain amount of money, we try to bring that code enforcement piece up quickly, um, and, and we go from there and have a more sustainable uh, source and I couldn't agree more with uh, councilmember Cook, you know, this is money well spent, this is, is about protecting our kids and our community and so um, I'm very happy to see that and, and it's about protecting the homeless community as well, so, great.
Kathy, what was the proposal, how did you want it, where did?
So maybe the thing to do is um, if, uh, I purposely, it says for security slash oversight, so I added that language in, um, and so if you pass the resolution, if you wanted just to edit the language, it's security slash overslice slash code enforcement, again, there could be that transition, so um, the funding could then support some of that and if there's anything else we can need to do, uh, that, I guess that's, would be my recommendation. Some make any sense.
I like it. So moved.
Second?
I'll call vote.
Councilmember Aggermonte? Aye. Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, on to councilmember reports and comments, any reports or comments? No? Oh, you got one? Yeah, do it.
I have a comment, but not a report. You know, some time ago, our, I think we're going to be celebrating the new Alcaldeza and Alcalde.
Alcalde.
Yeah, the Alcalde.
Nailed it.
My heritage just went down the drain. And the last Alcaldeza actually had a wonderful proposal for us all about parks and it has gone astray, so I don't know what has ever happened to it and uh, that, I just thought, you know, now that she's going to be terming out, I guess, it would be nice to know if we actually have got something on that.
So the recommendation from our Alcaldeza, Karen Collins, was to look at some kind of a Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment, so um, Erica Jacobs and myself have been working on that and we got obviously a little derailed in the world of PSPS through the fall and then more in the last three weeks with homelessness, so um, but we plan on bringing back to council kind of a, a scope and a proposal um, within uh, within the month of March.
Oh, great, oh, thank you.
So there is, there is work that's been going, it just, it wasn't quite tight enough to make it for this meeting, it still needed a bit more research, um, so we're clear about what we're gonna do and how that could look.
That's great, in fact, I think there's, some of the ideas included activities for seniors at parks, but I don't know if that's seen as the light.
I would like to wish councilmember Cook good luck tomorrow in the election and uh, he's put up a very good campaign and it is a pleasure to work with you and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
That's very nice. All right, I wish you luck as well and we saw, we went on a bike ride the other day and saw your yard signs out as far as Burndale, so you're doing, doing something, right? They're everywhere, it's great. Um, okay, uh, city attorney, Jeff Walter.
No comments.
Team outfit today, all right, closed session. Oh, city manager, I skipped you, how dare I?
Sorry, I do have just a few comments. Um, one, I, I know that everyone is fully aware of the coronavirus and the highly evolving situation that we are facing not only as a county, but uh, frankly, a nation and a world. Um, so I just wanted briefly to let council and community know that there, there has been and continues to be a lot of conversation by the Public Health Department, um, county emergency management um, with the cities as well. Um, the, this is because it is a health emergency, we are taking the lead from county health and from the CDC, um, the county in, in order to-
Um the county, in in order to make sure that they've got the re- right resources to support the county health department, they did declare a public health emergency today and a local emergency. And we are, um I'm gonna be meeting with, have meetings set up with the hospital and the health clinic and the school district tomorrow to kind of do some of our co- local coordinating. Um so, but there's a, clearly, you know, we work well as a community on these kinds of issues, um but this is a new road for all of us. And we don't know what's gonna occur. Um but I do want the public to know that there is a lot of um, a lot of active work um by public agencies and their public health experts on this. And on a different topic, um we do uh uh give some kudos to Travis Wagner, our Sustainability Coordinator, who's got a uh very fun Earth Action Day planned um on uh April twenty-fifth. So there'll be more information coming out on that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item ten point one. Um conference of legal counsel over anticipated lit- litigation. I'll open it up for public comment on the, oh, you're gonna talk, you have to talk. Okay.
Just a couple of comments before you do open up public comment. I want to make an announcement that this particular closed session involves um the Verizon application for three commercial cell sites in the city. At a recent public hearing, the Verizon attorney uh did indicate that this, Verizon would pursue litigation against the city if the city imposed various conditions uh on their cell sites that they don't agree with. And it's for that purpose then that we are now moving close, closed session. Talk about the options available to the council in that regard.
And I'm gonna recuse myself from this because one of the sites is across the street from my house, not on these particular three, but the general policy would affect me and 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 I don't care for having one across the street from my house.
Should've said the same. All right. Uh open it up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, I will adjourn to closed session.